Welcome to the, what date is this? May 8th, 2025, South Hampton Town Planning Board. We'll have a roll call, please, Florim.
Chair LaFaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Finnerty.
Present.
Secretary is here. Board Member Neely.
Present.
Board Member Fulham.
Present.
Board Member Glazer.
Present.
Board Member Buto is absent. We have a car.
Great, thank you. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have any minutes, Florim?
We do, April 24.
April 24. Just that?
That's, yes, and then we're up to date.
Wonderful. Dennis is moving it, Kate seconding it. All in favor?
Aye.
Close extension, six in favor, one absent. We're going to close out the regular session and go into a work session with Seth and Janice to discuss the revised battery energy storage system code article. Come on up. Welcome.
Hi.
We have some printouts here.
Seth's our man of the hour.
Yes, I did supply you with an Article 33, which is the main thrust of the battery energy storage systems code. And there are-
What's this one?
That is the, and that's the table of contents for quick review.
Okay.
So you have-
I think these are the Crip notes.
Yep, there you go.
The Crip notes, this is the whole thing.
Yes, that is the whole thing. As far as Article 33, there are seven other companion codes that were presented to the town board along with this, three of which were the tables of uses, residential, commercial, light industrial. We also looked at Chapter 157, which lists out all the Type 1 activities. I'll just give you the, since we're there. Tier 2, which we will get into, is now a Type 1 action under SECR. Then we also looked at accessory structures, that's another section of code that was bent a little bit.
And Tier 2 is-
Why start at the beginning, like the things that concern the planning board?
Yeah, don't take any segues.
Don't go segue?
Don't segue. Just systematically.
Okay, so we had some companion codes, they're quite self-explanatory, we'll leave it at that. But we, I think we, with the time we have, we should be looking into the Article 33. But how did we get here? So there is currently a moratorium in effect townwide for 600 kilowatt hours and above. That was in our town code under 16221, it was a special exception standards code.
And that, that's anything that's not allowed in your house?
We'll get into-
Detail.
Into the details of zoning and permissions here momentarily.
If I may, so that was your special exception code that is now going to be repealed in its entirety. So one of the referral that you're getting is, should we repeal this in its entirety, which you'll comment back?
Because I saw that at the town board, I mean, it was like a traffic jam of repealing.
So we just repealed it because to insert and fix would be like a nightmare of a document to look at and understand, so scrapped that one.
Start over.
Start over, and we redid it to be like the cell tower, its own section. That's why it's now in Article 33. So it's its own section, and then we did the tiering system, so that the things that this board will be concerned about are the Tier 1 and the Tier 2. Tier 1 being accessory to a business, like a supermarket, they want to have a battery. How is that? And then Tier 2 being 600 meg, 600 kilowatts, before it used to say "and above", and then we got caught out there, 100 megawatts later, we're here, and we're saying, the town board is now saying 5 is the cutoff. So it's all from 600 to 5.
33424.
Yes, so Tier 1 is-
426, if you want to open up your code, applicability is the tiering system.
Yeah.
This will give you an idea.
Is it on here?
Yes, it's, you'll see under small scale, see, 426A.
It's 20, 28.
So there's a small scale that goes, they call it behind the meter.
I have 25.
I'm sorry, do I have the long version? It's Section 426.
426A. But we're concerned about B and C.
I have page 7 on my-
Seven, Tom.
I have a different version, my page numbers are off.
On page 7.
Page 7 is 33426, applicability?
Yes.
Okay.
Tiering system, that's how I'm thinking of it.
Yep.
So A being the small scale, I'm sorry.
No, 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 go ahead. I just wanted to make it a little more clear to start, because it's already confusing.
The small scale, they're going to be subject to building, building regulate, building permits, electrical permits, they're small, there's a threshold for the size, they go up to 40 interior, 80 exterior. These are your residential units, these are behind the meter, which is just a phrase of, it's not an actual citing stipulation. At any rate, small power walls, for example, a power wall holds between 7 and 13 kilowatt hours of energy, that's what you plug your battery electric vehicle into, which probably has between a 40 and 100 kilowatt hour battery inside of it. So-
And that, what, what size is that, like, so?
Well-
I had asked you a little bit, so I could visualize it.
Yeah, a power wall would be-
Forty, 40 inches tall.
Forty inches tall, yeah, these eight inches deep.
Okay, so it's small.
They mount on the wall, yeah.
So this is subject to a building permit through the building department? So we start at? You start at B, right? Yeah, jump to B, because we don't have a packed house here.
So we have the residents, they're allowed to do those residential units. Those are also allowed throughout the other zones. We go into the next one, which would be B, Tier 1.
Tier 1, okay.
Now we're subject to planning and zoning. We have limited it between the, let's just use 80 to 600. It's going to require a lot area of 40,000 feet. It's not permissible in residential zones. This is only in business districts and light industrial. So the moment we've switched to the next, to Tier 1, we're ruling it out of residences.
And Tier 2 is also no residential. These are only-
We have the charts in here.
Commercial.
We do have the charts as well.
Here's charts.
So the Tier 1 is, they're both special exception, one has special safeguards and the other just is the general standards. So the first one, the Tier 1, up to 600, accessory battery. You still have to say in the general, in the general standards that it's appropriate, inadequate, makes sense where you're putting it. So it still has that level of scrutiny where it's not guaranteed P. So the board wanted it to be that there was a level of oversight there that, on both tiers.
So where is it, Janice, on the, on the use, on the-
You'll see, they both say SE. Tier 1 says SE, and Tier 2 says SE.
Am I looking at the right place?
But when you go to the standard-
Business and light industrial is where you'll see it.
So they're both permitted potentially by a special exception, which as you know is like a conditional use permit. You, Tier 1, is just 33122, which is the general standards. Tier 2 is the general plus the specific safeguards, because it's 600 kilowatt up to 5 megawatt.
And how large a unit is that? Refrigerator?
That's right, it's around a refrigerator, it's a cabinet, it's, it's a-
It's this Tier 1 or Tier 2?
Two cubics square footage, it's like two, it could be like two refrigerators put side by side.
They're in a contain, they're containerized, and they have to show how many batteries they're putting in a container on a pad, where the pad has to meet accessory setbacks, et cetera, and cannot be adjoining a residential district in any circumstance. So just rule of thumb, if you, even if you're a supermarket and you're next to a residential parsley, you can't have it.
So, so how many batteries go in to provide 40, to provide this power?
For Tier 2, I'm sorry, for the Tier 1 between 80 and 600, so when we think about lithium ion batteries, there's a breakdown, you have cells which are like, like literally a battery, AAA. And then you have racks, and you have modules. So these are a lot of little batteries, let's say your cellphone, and now we've got 1,000 of these little batteries from your cellphone in one unit. So that's where we're, they're just replicating by putting more and more of these little cells. Interestingly, or importantly, every cell in these containers is monitored by a battery monitoring system. These are not standardized software now in these containers. They can actually see the thresholds of the energy coming in and out of each battery, they can look at the, the heat, if it's overheating or not. At any rate, each individual cell can be isolated if there was a problem. So the more, the more that these batteries are, the more they're put into the containers, the more rigorous the control measures that they have.
And it's all computerized?
It's all computerized, it's all connected to remote operations centers, which is in here, in the code as well. But yeah, it, they have internalized fire safety provisions of, they, they can spray it, they, they off-vent, and they burn the gas off if there's a flammable gas, they do that on their own. So there's, it's a very interesting industry, and these, and these, this equipment is highly sophisticated.
Big question, when you said that Tier 1 is the regular special exception standards.
The general standards.
But what about decommissioning and, and some of the concerns?
Those are still your site plan conditions, you can still, yeah.
So there, so there's another section that has to be addressed as part of the code that relies specifically with battery storage, whether it's a Tier 1 or a Tier 2, question mark?
Yes, and it's interesting, you, you raised decommissioning, now that wouldn't really apply to the Tier 1, I mean, you can certainly look into it.
Because it's not its own utility facility. A decommissioning is because, this is like a power plant, right? It's like, it's working with the grid, there's commissioning and decommissioning, and accessory battery is not the same thing, right? So that's why, I mean, you know, you still have to dispose of everything properly, and you can put whatever conditions you want around that. But the Tier 2 is like, it's a facility, right?
It's commercial, I mean.
It's a, it's an industrial facility, it's an industrial zone. Tier 2 is 600 megawatt to five, I mean, 600 kilowatt to 500 mega, 5 megawatt, oh my gosh. 600 kilowatt to 5 megawatt is a battery primary use facility. It can be in connection with solar, but it is its own facility that gets commissioned, turned on. It's, it's interconnected with the grid, there's like a lot more than just say a battery, you know, accessory to a business.
To put that in context-
The battery is not connected to the grid, in a supermarket example?
It potentially can be, but it's not the same thing because it's not the same level of energy storage. So we don't use that same term, decommissioning. It's more like removal, you know, removal plan, you may require that in a site plan, you know, it's not, it's not the same level of power plant, decommissioning feeling, you know, does that make sense?
Yeah, I guess I'm just, I'm just questioning what additional, if any, things that we, when we review the site plan, if it's just special exception usage, that doesn't really, it may not address battery storage. In some ways it may, like noise, for example. But there's nothing else that has to be done?
There is, and the tiering, that it talks about all the fire protection codes it has to be.
Okay, that's kind of where I'm going.
It's still subject to SECR as well.
And it's still subject to SECR, and it still has all the cross-referencing to the fire.
Type 2. Well, yeah, yeah, we're all talking. So, if I may, the SECR review will take place with the Tier 1, for Tier 2, it's a Type 1 action.
Automatically.
Yeah, it's Type 1. So no matter what, you will have a SECR review on the Type, the Type 1.
And what about Tier 1?
Tier 1.
Yeah. And then for decommissioning, it's certainly a very low, it's a big part of the special exception standards that we have put in Article 33.
For Tier 1, you did say that on some occasions where the property is adjunct to residential, that you can't have it, but is there a foot, a linear foot?
300 feet, property line to property line. So not like you're seeing cannabis door-to-door type of measurements, which that came from the state, that's not our way of, we don't like that. We like, property line is a nice boundary, we know where it is, we're not going to sit here and-
And measure where the doors.
I, I spoke with the emergency management, Mr. Ryan?
Ryan Murphy.
Ryan Murphy, excuse me. Yeah, so there's an orange book, I can't, it's an alphabet soup of the, the name of it, but there's a, it calls out if there's a fire incident and a lithium ion, that involves lithium ion, 300 feet is a, is a standard evacuation, so.
So I think that was one of the questions we had, well, we had an earlier conversation, where did that come from?
Yeah, because that was the zone of dissipation of if there was any kind of, any, the questions came up about, like, what about the smoke? And is this air quality, is this toxic to me, and I'm living over here, and I don't want this? And so the industry standard was after 300 feet, there's no, there was no, in that fire agency working group, they came to find that there was, there's no-
Dissipate.
Dissipate with, after 300 feet.
Well, we have the first public hearing, this will have, might have some people who disagree with that number. I mean, I remember the public hearing we had, it came in from almost a mile, at least half a mile radius, objecting to the facility.
But the good news is, this is no longer anywhere other than industrial, light industrial, and we, and only in very limited circumstances is there any residents within 300 feet. And, and those wouldn't qualify, so those parcels of the LI. So we really drilled onto the maps very specifically with the working group to be like, if you impose this, these all go, you know, here's the only ones that will meet it, you know, that kind of thing. And, and we felt pretty good about the 300 feet, because there was nothing, other than like maybe a couple of parcels, and they wouldn't be eligible then.
Do you have a copy of those maps, where they're indicated?
I have several maps, several iterations.
Those will be in the SECR that goes with this when it gets adopted.
If I could speak to that, because I think we saw an early version during one of our work sessions, and also the reference to coastal evacuation routes. At that time, we weren't really sure what roads were designated as coastal evacuation routes, and I think just, you know, instinct says it's County Road 39, it's, you know, Sunrise Highway, it's Flanders Road, it's County Road 80, Montauk Highway, and at that time, it looked like, once you set that 500-foot limit along a railroad, you were really, there was almost no place to put them. So I was just wondering if you've refined that, did you get the definitions of what the coastal evacuation routes are?
We did, it's defined by the state, it's in, I recall, it's certainly in the code, and updated periodically. It's, interestingly enough, it's not updated hard, or it's very rarely updated, they've been the same coastal evacuation routes forever.
Once they were established, right?
And we did put it in our models, and yes, it excluded further the zones, especially since the highways and the transmission lines are pretty much side by side-
Right.
-in many cases. However, that was the, the decision the steering committee was interested in, and the town board supported, so we marched forward with the 500.
Probably be, sounds like very limited places where it could be done, but you'll have a map that a possible developer or whatever can see the sites that-
Absolutely.
-are meeting the criteria.
It, it doesn't take away the 500 foot, the site is in 500 feet, this, the facility itself, so say you have a really deep lot, and you can be set back more than 500 feet, I don't think it would knock you out, the same way that adjacent to a residence is knocked out.
But this gets you to, and again, we discussed it early on in the process, some kind of a master list that possible developers will know where, they may be able to see on a map, here's the places that you can look at.
As opposed to LIPA telling them where they should be.
Is that going to be incorporated into the code, this location?
No, we never do that. We don't put maps in the, you know, we just want to make sure we have a level playing field, where you're not just making it so restricted that only one person benefits. So we made sure we have an ample amount of parcels that qualify on the east of the canal and the western.
But you'll fill in the map as you go along. The way we do with the cell towers, to make sure that there's-
There is a provision for that.
Yeah, there's a database that has to be kept, and we'll do that in GIS, so we can always update those maps.
And requirement for the planning board to see where, just like cell towers, where are the other ones located, we're not trying to aggregate, I mean, at a certain point, if they're LI, they're going to be-
We all know where the LIs are, so after that, it's just a matter of, do you meet the minimum lot size, or you have a property line boundary shared with residential, those things are going to be your qualifiers. And that likes, Pierre Riverhead Road has a significant amount of LI that would, we, at least nine parcels, I think we were looking at, and that's not a coastal evacuation route, that's, you know, so those could qualify potentially, and then on the east side, we have some up in, then we have the railroad, and we have, you know, so there's a couple, it's a little trickier.
Do you know how many parcels within the town qualify with this new code?
Hardly.
I have 32.
They left them 50.
Different buffers.
Not a bunch.
No, but, but how many LI 40, I don't recall how many LI 40 and 200 there are, but there aren't that many to begin with.
Right.
And again, we're discussing Tier 2 at this point, we are not, we are allowing the Tier 1s as an accessory or a primary use in business districts, which is-
Just accessory.
Just accessory.
Yeah.
To what extent is proximity transmission lines, where these are located?
Very important. On the larger scale, the utility scale units, if they cannot connect to the, to the transmission line for the most part, then they wouldn't be able to build out.
Has the town done any analysis?
I was, we were able to, through the steering committee, to access LIPA's hosting capacity maps, which, which has every distribution line and all the transmission lines, the voltage, the things, lots of information there, who's in the queue, who's trying to put in solar. At any rate, we, we use that overlay map and put our, our zones, and we looked at, okay, this, it gave you a, you could actually put in the filter up to 5 megawatt, and it would show you the, the lines that can handle up to 5 megawatt. And then we would put that with our maps and see how they coincided. So we did do a, an analysis of, on our own, however, that, that being said, these, an applicant would do that on their own to begin with, before they would probably even come to, come to us. And in order to come to us, they'd have to give us a letter from LIPA as part of our code, saying it's been researched, there's a letter confirming that this is not just a red herring.
So you're in the lead here, not LIPA?
Yes, yeah, so, that's an important factor.
If you're, if you're having to put transmission lines in, no one's really, probably going to allow themselves to only get, out of it 5 megawatt, so, you know, it's too costly. It's cost prohibitive at some point.
Does this get into the burying of the lines to connect to LIPA versus overhead connections? Do, does that interest?
It says it's required except at the connection point, right? It has to be underground.
Underground.
Interconnect.
Except the interconnect point where there's a, no, LIPA requires that, there's no way we could zone it out, because then we would eliminate everyone.
And we have underground at the site.
Yeah, like subdivisions, underground utilities.
So we, we, have we got to Tier 2 yet? We've kind of glanced-
Well, you know-
But maybe we should hone in on-
We were talking about just the avoidance areas, I think of, you know, certain Tier 2s, so you know, like the lot size.
80,000 on the Tier 2.
Yeah, what page are you?
Uh, 7 and, 7, 8, I think we're at.
Okay.
Part C is Tier 2.
Tier 2 is C.
So you see like parcels within 300 feet of an occupied community building parcel, meaning like a school, a hospital, et cetera.
Single-family residence.
Single-family, and industrial district that we mentioned that shares the, the property with any of those things.
Now what about a hospital, say for example, they build a new hospital, they're going to put in their own battery storage system?
They probably won't, they probably use generators still to this day, which is not sustainable, but, I mean, you know, in terms of carbon, but I, you know.
They wouldn't.
Most hospitals will likely put a generator.
Well, but on the code, they would be permitted up to 600.
Up to a certain amount of their output, so they could do up to 600 kilowatt hours, which may be enough for hospital backup, but we don't, you know.
I'm just thinking ahead.
Hospital.
South Hampton moves to the campus.
They have to generate their electricity to do it, they don't put solar around hospitals. Maybe if they build a new one.
Right.
But the old ones don't have it.
Yeah, you know, we did design a microgrid for this hospital, in this whole village.
Yeah.
That would be awesome, but that didn't happen. Um, so anyway, coastal erosion areas, it's kind of intuitive, nobody wants to put in the area of special flood areas, the core, for protection overlay where clearing standards cannot be met. In other words, they shouldn't be coming here, saying here's, you know, most of the APOD is in residential zones anyway, so it kind of knocks it out. So, but some of the LI, and if they have to over-clear in order to get it, then you would say you're not sub-avoidance.
Yep. Especially if it's at the Pine Barrens.
Right, yeah. Ag lands, we don't want to start picking that candidate. Historically and culturally significant resources, unless it can be demonstrated, it will not adversely affect that resource, and it's fully reversible. Any designated conservation area, designated scenic corridors or view sheds within 500, as Tom mentioned, the coastal evacuation route, which the county seemed to like that. They said they never had thought of that before.
So you can-
Suffolk County, they're like looking over this code, and they mentioned to me when I was at their meeting that they, they like that, they were going to recommend that to other towns as well. And wetlands, so then, and then it gets into, you know, we said that it's going to be Type 1 action, we have like indemnifications, there's exemptions, skipping down then to the special standards for Tier 2.
Tier 2.
Can I just ask a question about, maybe, maybe a four on Tier 2 than Tier 1, sand mines?
That got taken out. Because sand mines are residential zones. So we had another section for our renewable energy overlay, like a, like a zoning overlay that the town board could put, and then it could go from 5 megawatts up to 19, and still stay below the state, so you still have home rule, and they said, until we feel comfortable, we just don't want to do that.
Okay.
So they're not doing that anytime soon.
Okay. We can, we can still do solar, but just not battery.
Right, which, you know, I have to say, like, the solar does want the batteries, but not in a residential zone, can't.
So we'll jump into the special exception standards, or you guys, that's Section 429? Again, it's specific?
429, yes, okay.
11.
Tier 2.
So then those are the specifics, you know, the minimum lot area, these are the standards that will be coming to you, that you'll be reviewing, the application against, do they meet these things? So they can't be like, hi, I'm 5 megawatt, and then I have this next door parcel that's also 5. Like, you can't do that. If they're same owner, same everything, it can only be 5 total, can't aggregate. You know, it gives us the typical screening access, it's saying you have to have a proper frontage on a real road, you know, no dirt path back to wherever to have these batteries, they have to be on a real road. Landscape maintenance, you know, the enclosure, some people in other places, they don't always have batteries in containers, obviously, we want them in the containers, with the whole monitoring system and all that. And this is new, that the 20 feet on all around has to be free and clear, no vegetation, you know, it could be like gravel. Initially, we have a ground cover in there, I think, and they said no, just all, just like nothing.
Nothing that could burn.
So it doesn't burn.
Nothing that can burn.
Janice, could it, the, the housing, the covering, now, the, some places, I guess, they're just open air, for want of a better word, and other places, they're within a building, are you saying?
Yeah, I'm saying, this is utility scale, again, this is 600 kilowatts to 5 megawatt, has to be in a storage container. Somebody who has like a little one, as long as they meet the fire protection code and the state building code, up to 80.
Storage container, I'm a little confused, within, like, a bill, okay, a building, a structure over, or surrounding the-
They actually are encapsulated in there, they, they're sold in the container, because you have, actually, the fire suppression system is in there, the computer system that runs it is in there, it's all, what had happened is, at the beginning, there were rooms you could walk into where the batteries would be housed.
Right.
This has developed past that, where these are just cabinets or containers that are dropped off onsite with everything included inside, you literally just connect this giant ISO container to the grid.
It's an outer shell, or-
Which has got standards and codes and testing methods. I had, we have a list that's put together with 21 different standards, and again, testing certifications. And those containers are the things that get certified, not the individual cell, but the entirety of the container or cabinet.
But also, he said giant, but in a 5 megawatt setting, they're not like that big. He said giant, but in a five megawatt setting, they're not like that big. You know, the hundred megawatt was the shocking one that it was. A lot of those containers in a five megawatt installation, maybe you'd have four.
Container is three megawatts, that's your standard, uh, on the back of a truck. That's about three megawatts in one, in one of those.
So in all of this, is there a mechanism in the code that requests reports from these people on a periodic basis? That it's functioning well? And, and, and who would get it? The engineering, the engineering department here? I don't know.
You're touching on a critical point and something that, uh, has come out of, after the three fires, uh, that occurred. There was an inter-agency working group put together by Governor Hochul. Some of the, the experts in the field got together and they dissected all the different standards and codes, specifically the fire code. And in the fire code, there's a provision that said, uh, town municipality shall consider peer review when they go, when they have a site plan with a battery. It's now a requirement that we have peer review. Importantly, NYSERTA, the Energy and Research Development Agency with New York, is offering this for six hundred kilowatt hours and above, so we're talking tier one, tier two, free. So we had it in our code that the applicant had to pay, but NYSERTA will come and review the system for all compliance with all the different national standards, testing methods, et cetera, and put a report in our hands saying if it passes or if it fails. Additionally, there is also, while we're deciding, uh, what's called a clean siting team. This is another service by the state. They will send someone who will help us understand the best siting, uh, the design standards for each particular, uh, battery.
NYSERTA.
NYSERTA. This is all part of their incentive program. It's called the retail incentive, incentive program. They are interested in.
Pushing battery storage.
The climate leadership and community preservation act says three thousand megawatts by twenty thirty.
And will NYSERTA come in on a regular basis to do this? Let's say yearly or biannually?
So this would be, that would, I was speaking to the review process. Now, there are several, we have commissioning plans. Uh, we have pre, preliminary commissioning plans that would help us understand what's proposed on the site, what's actually put on the site. There is a lot of back and forth between the applicant and us. There are several provisions. I mean, it's, it's a, there's a wide variety of provisions in the special exception standards. There's probably five or six plans that, there's a fire prevention plan, an emergency response plan. All of these things have to be periodically updated.
And they do an annual training with our fire.
So what is the planning board looking at? What's our responsibility?
The citing standards we just went over.
Just the citing.
And if you say, but we don't understand, but we don't, you remember that was like an, an issue initially, like, we don't have the expertise, we don't.
Right.
You now have what Seth was talking about, an outside neutral agency of NYSERTA to facilitate that peer review. Somebody else look at it and say, well, you know, if you say, is this, they're creating this berm and the cabinet is right here, is that too close? And you're asking us and we say, we don't know, you know, and we can go to the expert and be like, where is the right point? Where this thing should be in the berm, you know, so it's really like citing standards, screening, making sure they're committing to all the things, vetting these people that they've given you their sort of bona fides, that they're.
Are they available, Janice, all the time or do you get on a waiting list?
So NYSERTA offers their service, then of course there are private third-party organizations that we can partner or have a list of that we can turn to.
Like a consultant?
SRG consultants.
I don't think you're gonna get like a flood of these, that we're gonna be flooding them with it either.
But there are other avenues.
Okay. But, yeah, they, uh, you know, so you're looking at, you would refer the stormwater management plan to the town engineer, like you always do. You'll refer, you know, things to the fire marshal, like you always do. Um, maybe the cabinets could be. We gave in the code up to fifteen feet. They really only need to be, they come ten feet, but what if you wanted them clad a certain way, to look a certain aesthetic? You could do that. Uh, you can refer to the ARB, you can, you know, so the same things you always do.
Infrastructure.
Yeah, um, screening and landscaping and stormwater and there's an aquifer protection component here where they have like this drainage area, like almost like the, we, you've done with crawl courses where they have retention pond. So then the, you know, from monitoring wells or whatever, like you can do that kind of thing as well.
Those are lined?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that would be provision nine.
Yeah, and the water, if say there's a fire event and the water doesn't just, the concern was, wait a minute.
Where does it go?
This water's just seeping back into the groundwater, um, it would all go to a retention pond that gets tested to make sure it's, it doesn't have any contaminants prior to its release. So we hope we've captured everything that everyone wanted. Of course, no code is perfect, but this is pretty heavily regulated land use, like.
As it should be.
So, you know, initially, as we know, we went with the NYSERTA model code that was a little too loose, you know. And then all these things came down and happened and NYSERTA really stepped up and started doing all these root cause analysis and fire prevention and the governor's work task force and all these things to make it right. And so, you know. And then we've done, taken those things in and all the best codes and most recent codes from around the country. And FDNY being like the gold standard and melding it all into one thing.
Yes, and the steering committee, we digested this information. We thought what really applies to us. And this really came about, and this was not created in a vacuum. We're saying there was a lot of new codes were coming in. The fire code is, is being updated, the international code is being updated as well. So we were taking those recommendations before they're actually adopted.
You had a lot of good comments all along, which was that renewable energy overlay district, which we tried to do initially.
Yeah.
Um, to create like an energy district or something. But that, that's just, it's just baby steps, I think.
Yeah.
I have a question. Um, so, you know, the A, B, and C is, A is sort of unlabeled and then you have tier one and tier two. How did you decide not to just say tier one residential, tier two is?
Because tier one, you, yeah, I don't know. Okay.
It's just confusing.
It was so, it's so commonplace, that's my thinking.
And the other one's just not a tier.
Okay.
Yeah, so you could make that comment, you know, but, uh, I don't know why we did that.
Okay, that's a minor one. Um, the other question I had was, you know, a lot of the, um, grid usage is acknowledging that there's a lot of larger homes that, you know, are pulling a lot of power from the grid. Um, how do you, you know, incorporate those? Is the eighty kilowatt hours enough for that, you know, a more sizable home within the town to offset there? Okay.
And they do.
Uh, we have hers readings, don't forget.
And mostly all of them can't meet it without the solar and they all, almost all of the real big houses have the Tesla power walls in them.
And a lot of geothermal.
And geothermal. So they, uh, sort of are doing their own part to offset their own, uh, they're like their own little thing onto themselves. The bigger thing is uses like you're seeing now coming along, like these data centers. Or things like, tho- those are monster energy hogs. Uses are suck the grid dry. I don't know what we're gonna do if they ever come here, but I don't think, you know.
That land is too expensive.
Trying to be in yapink and, you know, I heard they have to use so much water, even the groundwater, to cool them. So like those kinds of things that are real energy hogs are the ones to be concerned about.
So that leads to my question is, are adjoining towns also adopting a best?
We are leading the charge. So it's been, uh.
I think Roca, Roca is allowing it, but everybody else is, the other, the other east end are all.
Riverhead allowed it too. They did not have a moratorium.
True. They have a code?
They have a code.
What about East Hampton?
East Hampton is still a moratorium.
And a moratorium?
Yes, Huntington, because they, Huntington, we talked to. The county has encouraged us to keep talking together.
Great.
So it's a little more uniform.
Has any of Cape Cod adopted this? Because it's such a similar.
Oh, but I always look to them for everything.
Yeah.
But we did use Washington State.
Washington State has some exemplary, uh, code that I adopted some of the measures from, in particular, some of that language on the, uh, aquifer protection. They too had, uh, provisions on, related to that. Um, George, uh, Michigan is a leader in the space. They've put out a lot of great literature and if anyone is interested, I would say, please, I have put together a long, a, a big library of information. Uh, if you're so inclined.
Battery expert.
So one more question from the, um, the tier one and tier two sizing is clear. In terms of the accountability factor that Gloria had brought up, um, the tier one and tier two are separated out by the, um, amount of kilowatt hours, um, but not specified serving one building or, you know, versus linking to the community grid. And it might be good to specify that because you could, um, have the permitting or the accountability of maintenance and decommission either flow with the property or with the entity in terms of the community, um, ones that are plugged into the grid.
You mean like CCA or something? Or do you mean just, when, once you tie into the grid, you're regulated by LIPA too? Like, don't forget that that's like really stringent regulations there, so.
So I was just confused when you were, um, saying tier one versus tier two. The only stipulation in here in terms of the difference is the range of kilowatt hours. It's not whether you're plugged into the grid or not, or is that just relying on the economics of that situation?
You could be connected to the grid at five hundred kilowatts.
Certainly.
But we're not getting into it as though that qualifies you as a facility, you know what I mean?
It's more retail, I mean.
It's a retail, um, yes, that's the perfect word. Like basically, the whole industry is like six hundred and above is what we are worried about or, or, not that we're not worried about. There's still state building code, there's still all this fire codes about every size, even twenty kilowatt. So, but it's when you start aggregating them, once you get to six hundred, that's where you're like, wait a minute, all this. Whereas below that, it's smaller, it's accessory to, they have to prove their energy use in the first place. So it's hard to even get to that higher number because they only get whatever they are using. Like, you know, you don't get to now inject, you know, you're not gonna be, uh, ISO, like operating, like selling on the grid your little excess battery storage capacity as a supermarket. You're just backing up what you need.
Well, that's like.
Right, so there is that delineation then, up to six hundred. Not linking to the grid, right?
It could link to the grid, but it doesn't, it's accessory to your use and there's a whole.
Yeah, so we have a section that says, in a business district, your average daily load that you consume on your, the mile electricity you use on your site, you can have, because of the way kilowatts go to kilowatt hours, twenty-four times that load, because it's probably in kilowatts. So then we make a kilowatt hour, that's the battery you'd be allowed. And it can't violate six hundred. That's the max, that would be the max, but you would be allowed no greater than that. Let's say if it was beneath six hundred. I won't play with the math, but do you follow?
Yeah, and so, um, again, just circling back, what is, um, from what I understood of what you were saying in terms of maintenance and decommissioning, would be a condition of approval, which is, really doesn't travel with the code. It's our discretion or is that part of the special exception?
I see what you're getting at.
We wanna solidify what they're responsible for and not make it up to interpretation if it's ever sitting in the seat.
In other words, let's use our supermarket example. We have a supermarket and they are like, here's our twenty-four times our, whatever. This is our accessory battery and we want to put it in our accessory setback. And you go, is this appropriate, adequate for the use? You go through the general standards, it's not situated in a way that we're not gonna like it. And you are going to grant the site plan special exception approval. You would then have conditions related to its removal, like if it's, you know, you would just be saying that battery, if you're no longer a supermarket, you have no rights to that.
Like a dear friend.
You know, it's, it's tied to the use because it's accessory to that use and it's located there as an accessory use to the primer. So when you give that special exception for it to be accessory to, you are also going to put, you know, conditions about its removal when the use goes away.
Right.
So it's not commissioning, decommissioning, like, um, like, those, those terms are utility terms. And so we're not gonna worry about them having this, it's like having a generator. You think of it like that, at that level. It's not the same.
Janice, do you have a ZBA opportunity in any of this or not?
Every zoning code has to have a relief valve for, in order for it to be constitutional. Otherwise, there would be no zone.
Comments from us to the town board? I think one, my comment would be that, uh, uh, with residential, there's a lot of open space parcels. Uh, unbuildable maps, um, old filed maps. I'm thinking of this corridor in West Hampton, all those LI parcels. They back up to old filed maps that will not be developed, but many of them, much of it is owned by the county. But yet you constrain these sites because, um, because they're within three hundred feet of a residential zone. I'm wondering if some language could be augmented to, to look at parcels, to exempt parcels um, that have, that are otherwise no, not, in residential zones, were not gonna be developed. I'm thinking open, specifically open space parcels, old file map parcels, because as Jack is right, it's gonna be rushed to the ZBA to get relief from, from those.
Literally not even allowed. It's an avoidance area.
But if you, the language now is three hundred feet from residential zone parcels. But a lot of times you have a residential zone parcel, it's an old file map, it's owned by the county, but yet doesn't qualify.
It doesn't matter though, because once you're adjacent, property line to property line, the LI parcel is avoidance now. It, it cannot, it just because we're not, cell tower regulations start talking about like, well, if it's vacant, you know, the, the, the fall zone and how you are, if you're next to vacant, platted or unplatted or blah blah. We're not even saying that. It's just, if this is residential, if it's an old file map or open space or whatever, we don't care.
Would not open more opportu, would not provide more opportunity for deciding these facilities?
But the town board doesn't want to locate it anywhere near a residential, anything, even if it's.
Even though the residential, they're, my point being this, they're residentially zoned, but they can never, they cannot be built.
Do you wanna make that your comment, that like, if that maybe to expand opportunities?
And I'm not, I don't have the language, I, I can't offer any language now, but, you know, maybe staff, the department can think of augmenting some language to make a provision for parcels that are residentially, that are in the residential zone, but cannot be, ever be developed. Either they're county open space, town open space, old file map sending sites, which.
Yeah, so you're saying where an LI forty abuts an open space parcel or some other restricted or preserved parcel?
I think that's tricky.
Then you have the argument that says, but that's just as dangerous because.
It might be residential.
No.
If that's the intent, is to keep it away from residential zones and you're not gonna have residences there. I'm just thinking that it might open up more opportunities to siting.
How about I write, if any LI parcels adjacent to residential open space where no residential uses will be permitted are available.
Open. They, like, we're having the discussion, they should have. I'm just seeking, I'm trying to preclude.
But why do we need more sites?
I'm trying to preclude.
There are thirty-two sites. Why do we need more? You want sixty? You know. The intent is not to increase the number of sites, is to manage what we've got. And I think the word residential is gonna create. But, but, you know, you can have an old file map that's sending and suddenly somehow or another it becomes receiving. It's, well.
Well, and that's what the ZBA.
Because I, I know it's, you know, that's exactly where they're gonna go. And oh, by the way, we'd like relief from these other provisions. In addition, you know, we should try and tighten the codes that, it, so you leave less of a window, an opportunity to, to seek relief.
Well, then say that it's not permitted.
Well, yeah. Any one of these provisions can be, you know, appealed to the ZBA. And that's probably gonna be the primary one. They're, their, their argument's gonna be, look, even though we're within three hundred feet, this property next to us is county, uh, open space.
But the chances of that, that being adjacent to the grid is probably slim. Pretty far away.
I would take it on, or the way that we've done this from the get-go is, let's look at the maps, let's get the hosting capacity map out and say, let's, let's put those parameters in and see if anything is generated. That way we can just either rule this out as a non, non-starter or this actually has some, some potential.
Parcels are in flux. Sometimes a parcel comes up, the county ends up taking a piece, or we do a residential subdivision and there's an open space next to it. So, did, what's hap, what exists today might not exist ten years from now.
If you consider that and it's something that the town board is interested in moving forward on, I would want that to come back to this board with the map. So we could.
See what ramifications.
No. There's no harm in asking a question, but if that question is asked with the implication that we want it to be answered yes, I think that's a little dangerous without seeing what that looks like.
Also, I mean, there are situations. Also, I mean, there are situations, and it won't be specific, but where you have a residential. I mean, residential can crop up just about anywhere, even though people say it'll never happen, you know, it can happen. And so if we prohibit this from what you're talking about, is one thing, but. Because property is in flux here.
Well, to that matter, zone change is gonna occur also, I mean.
That's true.
Anything can happen anywhere, but county, open space purchases by the county, there's general consensus that cannot be developed residentially. I mean, there's alienation and everything.
One of the criteria also here is to look at its proximity to like woodlands. Because maybe there's a point in time where that doesn't make sense, like the parcel may be LI, but it could be in the middle of the Pine Barrens, and you're like. So what you're saying makes sense, but then if those are like open space parcels and they're wooded, and now like, even though no one's gonna live there. You you know, we don't wanna.
Do you wanna?
It's a little precarious there too, so I'm not sure, or I, we're happy to put down whatever you want, you can think that through, we have time. You don't have to adopt anything today.
We don't have to do anything today, we on the twenty-seventh, we have another session.
Say this, it would be great if you at least maybe do um something related to the repeal entirely. Because that's the special exception standards that the moratorium is based on, so once that, and I hope they could adopt that. On the tw- you know, at that night, hopefully. And then all this new stuff, we have time for. Come back in the next meeting with a with an actual resolution and.
Wouldn't we wanna do the re- yeah, the repeal and the replacement at the same time, so you're not kinda in the wind? Until we.
You can, you can, I'm just saying, the repeal, I think we all agree, those standards are not germane anymore and they should be repealed.
But you can't take it away and not have something to put.
No, you're you're not replacing them, you're creating a whole new article and placing it somewhere else.
Space, there's gonna be a timeframe where nothing exists.
It's like taking a bucket away from a dripping thing.
It would just be gone, you wouldn't be able to apply.
Then they can't do it.
You can't do anything. Let's say you said, yeah, we agree that three thirty-one sixty-two point twenty-one should be repealed. They can repeal it that night. The moratorium is based on the code that's going to be repealed, the moratorium is to say, stop, that code can't be invoked. If you don't have a code, it's prohibited.
So do you wanna write that language up and we can vote on it later?
Yeah, go on today, at least then they can close that hearing, that specific one, and then you can have more thoughtful comments for the others.
But this was very helpful, thank you for doing.
An abbreviated version.
Abbreviated, much abbreviated. Okay, great, thank you so much.
Hey, thank you very much.
Thanks for all your work on this, Seth.
Okay, so I'm closing the um work session, going back into the regular session, and we have Seth, don't go away. Francis Mulvey. Yeah, West Hampton, Seven Percy Avenue.
Seven Percy Avenue, two lot subdivision.
Is there someone here? Hi, how are you? Your name for the record, sir?
Robert Morrison, let go Shea, Morrison and Bruin, two fifty North Sea Road, Southampton for the applicant.
Okay, so this uh we discussed the subdivision at the last meeting, we had gone over the draft final approval. Uh and looked through some of the referrals that had been submitted to the planning board. Uh there were two items that were were of interest to the planning board that we were going to explore a little bit. That is it, and you'll see on the back of the conditional approval, I have attached three maps, actually, of the site. Uh because one of the things that came up was the uh concert, that the conservation division had recommended a fifty percent. Uh clearing limitation, and the planning board had thought that maybe a twenty-foot wildlife corridor. Uh was in order, sorry, that's for you. So I was unsure exactly to what extent the the planning board wished to see that corridor, so I had put three different iterations together. Uh you have the, I I was for sure about the north-south line there. Um and then I had put two different styles.
Just hold it up, what you're talking about, just.
Oh, so. This this line being the north-south, that was a twenty-foot uh wildlife corridor that I think you guys had proposed. Uh on number two, I had put the center line, which was the dividing line between the two of the proposed subdivision. I had put that to the south, so it was primarily in the vacant. Uh the last iteration, I had put it straddling the the division line, so that it was. It was fairly equal between the two. So I did calculate out the different uh, this is not, it's the inverse of the way we usually talk about it. This is the amount that I protected, not the amount of developable, developable. And Kate, I believe you'd asked, what was the level of clearing on lot one being the top one? I calculated about sixty-two percent, so.
It's not an APOD, so you're not, you're not constrained by by percentages. I think the straddling is better.
I mean, if it's straddling.
They both seem to be straddling, I'm not, I'm confused.
Otherwise, the other parcel, bird, warbird, with the two of these.
With the straddling, lot one would have four thousand nine hundred square feet, that's option three.
Option three, right.
Okay, so, and the seventy-five hundred in lot two.
So basically, uh, yeah.
So I will put that in the the resolution to be shown on the maps and.
Do you wanna go through the rest of it?
Uh yeah, of course.
Are we, uh, action deadline?
Uh yes, today is the action deadline. Uh yeah, so I will, I won't go back over the referrals as we touched on all those at the last meeting. Uh but I would like to uh to call out, uh I guess, the the resolution.
Do you have to bring sewage credits in?
Yeah, we did.
You did?
Pineberry press, which we brought in, which I gave to.
They were presented to the planning board, I had, I saw a copy of the credit.
Before you get into the resolution, you gotta just make one request or whatever, um with respect to item number three, which has to do with submission of contract proof of payment. Suffolk County Water Authority for installation of water mains and hydrants. Um my client has been advised by uh the Capital Projects Coordinator, Stephen Huber, at the Suffolk County Water Authority, that they. Have gone up to bid, actually, to extend the main and to put hydrants in, uh to extend the main down Mulvey, uh I'm sorry, not Mulvey. Percy, yeah, Mulvey's the client.
The could, the county, the Suffolk County Water Authority is doing that.
Right, so if we could add language that says, you know, that either either he will pay for them or um provide proof that. They're going to be installed pursuant to uh. Right, a grant received by the Water Authority.
Can I, can I just interject here, not to create a problem, if you would just be aware of it? That's okay, we don't know when the county's gonna do it, but if they're doing it, that's right for them. My only concern is. If you go to file, your map from the health department shows the water main extension, if you go to go like get a building permit tomorrow. You have to go to the health department, their their map shows a water main extension, so it it it, you know. So you're not gonna get a permit for the health department to build a septic and a new house, unless that water's put in. So I just, I I don't think this is necessarily your issue per se, but I wanna let the applicant know that.
Okay, so, so we should not include.
Submission of a contract, can, so we're changing that to the proof of uh that a grant.
No, I mean, the language that you picked is okay, um it's fine, because you're just tying it to the work getting done. I'm just saying, he could have an issue with the health department when he goes to get.
You don't care how it gets done, I mean, we do, obviously, but uh obviously it might impact our.
Where did you put that, Seth?
Yeah, so, I mean, we're, this is on point three, and to be resolved, submission of a contract and proof of payment. Or a grant in lieu of uh.
Give us the exact language so that we can vote on it.
On the back of the second page, number three.
Uh yeah, so submission of a contract, a proof of payment, or a grant provided.
Who could grant?
And the proof of the grant?
No, I would say proof, proof uh of the um. Of the contract, of the uh of the county's intention to bring in the water.
That they're installing it.
That they're installing it.
Right, the grant doesn't, how they how they fund it doesn't matter.
Okay, so so how are we wording that, submission of a contract?
Or a letter of commitment from Suffolk County Water Authority that they are intent to install them.
Award of a contract.
Usually would be a letter of commitment, right, if it's from another party?
Counsel? Is that what it would be, a letter of?
They award contracts.
So it's a submission of a contract? Submission of a contract from the Suffolk County Water Authority for installation of water mains and hydrants as shown on the final plat, is that good?
Sounds appropriate to me.
Okay, so until Suffolk County Water Authority awards that contract, you're not approved fully, you're in limbo.
And is it one hydrant?
Yes, it is one hydrant, and yeah, that was the other point.
Isn't there one right across the street, is this the one that?
Yes, that's correct, we needed one north of the highway, did you decide on the final location?
Well, I think prefer, whatever they want, the one that was like in front of the, the one that like.
So you'll indicate that on this subdivision map?
So that'll be indicated as one of the uh, one of the changes to the map.
Indicate location, where is, is that a separate?
That's on the uh the changes to the map, yes. So following the, following are the map changes, remove all the building envelopes. Uh propose structures from the final map, we will revise the note that pertains to a declaration of covenants and restrictions. Uh we will also revise the note uh that pertains to the zoning board of appeals. Uh show the postal street addresses obtained from the town tax assessor. Note the size of the proposed water mains, label the location of the blow-off valves as may require by the SCWA. Uh I will be changing uh this next stipulation to show that we were going to be adopting option three. Uh and the, which I guess we'll attach, somehow I'll have to delineate that. That would be indicate the site disturbance will be limited to a twen- and I will. List out a northwest, a north-south twenty-foot wildlife corridor. In addition to east-west, and I will try to follow in the property lines, et cetera, et cetera.
So north-south and an east-west, two wildlife corridors.
Three in total, yes.
Okay, so limited, three wildlife corridors.
Three wildlife corridors. And how they adhere to their property line and the dimensions. Uh indicate the fire, uh the the final fire hydrant location on Percy. Uh step two, uh part two would be the, that prior to the building permit, the installation of the fire hydrant. Uh in accordance with the town standards and.
Fire hydrant, you need the word hydrant. Installation of the fire, do you have?
Oh, did I cross out the hydrant, I'm sorry. Uh in accordance with the town sta- standards and location shown on the final plat, as recommended by the West Hampton Beach Fire District, shall be required. Uh submission of a contract and proof of payment.
From the Suffolk County Water Authority.
Yeah, or the award of a contract, letter of commitment, and we're putting that in there as well. Uh from the Suffolk County Water Authority for the installation of water mains and hydrants. The applicant shall comply with all the recommendations of the engineering division prior prior to the signature of the final plat. Sub- uh submission of a certificate of abandonment, uh payment of the park fee of twenty-five hundred. And the following covenants and declarations.
Why don't you say park fee for one lot?
Park fee for one lot, okay. The covenants and restrictions will read as uh as such, no further subdivision of any lots into additional building lots. No lot line modifications without planning board approval on all lots. All new utilities shall be uninstalled underground, including cable vision, electric, and telephone services on all lots. No new utility poles for overhead utilities or services on all lots. Installation of fire hybrid hydrants for the establishment. Sorry, installation of fire hydrants. Uh in accordance with the town standards and the location shown on the final plat, as recommended by the West Hampton Beach Fire District prior to building permit. Uh the three-inch drainage for all future impervious surfaces, including roofs, driveway, and tennis courts. Retention of stormwater runoff, erosion sediment control during and after construction. And compliance with New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, federal and state threatened uh northern long-eared bat. Regulations? Submit- submission of title certification, submission of mortgage consent, town attorney approval on all legal documents. The submission of four li- four mylar prints, submission of all or four said documents prior to planning board signature. And the recording of maps and documents within sixty-two days.
And they did a um, an archaeological review?
Yes, we uh we did make sure to go back and put, get that done uh after.
Is that in this report somewheres? Somewhere this mentions it?
I didn't mention it because nothing was found, I can certainly put in that an archaeological study was performed. That would be a whereas statement. Whereas the applicant conducted a phase one, phase one A and one B, and with no. Archaeological significant artifacts or structures found.
Robert, do you have any other questions, any other questions from the board? Motion by Dennis, second by Gloria, and all in favor? Close, extensions, uh six in favor and one absent, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Seth. The bridge. I have this in two places, right?
Here's another one.
Uh this is thirty-one, the bridge, I'm not sure if we have anybody here in the audience. Uh but this is also number fourteen on the agenda. It is a multi-pronged application, an amended site plan application, and covenant amendment, and a site disturbance application. Um the applicant is located in the Great Hampton Road Race's subdivision, they have APOD. Clearing restrictions, there is site plan requirements because of the slopes. Um and there was some issues with disturbance to the existing slopes, they came up with a revegetation plan that was acceptable to our office. And the chief environmental analyst's office. Um at the last meeting, there was concerns regarding the recommendation to have uh further restrictions on clearing of the site. Um less than the thirty-five percent pursuant to um the site plan. Uh so based on our discussion at the last meeting, rather than having a blanket statement saying your clearing is now thirty percent. Uh we have uh submit, uh made the resolution revised, conditioned on submission of a covenant. That says any site disturbance or site regrading has to come back in to the planning board for site uh site plan review, any.
Didn't we say that the slopes, the slopes, the slopes? The slopes, we have to use the word the slopes.
Right.
That the slopes are not to be touched.
Let me double check, and if not, I can revise the wording. Indicating land disturbance inclusive of clearing grading and construct and or construction will require a site plan. In the, in the un, in the slopes.
Can you give us the exact wording?
They sent over a a covenant, that's, that means what I'm saying, so.
So I think we're talking about that, if we were gonna say on the sloped areas, we would say as deline- or as noted on the site. So I think we're talking about that, if we were gonna say on the sloped areas, we would say as deline- or as noted on the site plan, right? Because, yeah, okay.
Okay.
And where, but we want the word slopes in here.
All right, I'll amend it accordingly. So I'll just say a draft covenant indicating any land disturbance inclusive of clearing grading and/or construction in the slopes as noted on the site plan will require a site plan review and shall be submitted uh, for review and approval by the, by the town attorneys prior to filing with the Suffolk County Clerk's Office and submission of a certified copy to the town. And then all the rest of the conditions are the standard conditions, such as submission of the revised site plan documents with the conditions listed, this applicant's signature statement. The, um, as-built survey after revegetation and final inspection.
Do we wanna say a draft covenant, or it's a covenant, have you seen it?
She already has the draft. It's a draft, um, I'll, I'll add, it said something, I, I don't remember the exact language, but it was according without, um, further site plan approval from the planning board, I don't know if that, we just have to add the site plan that's being approved, the date and the site plan.
On the covenant, or do you want that in the, in the?
In, we're gonna put the, in the covenant, perfect.
So.
Okay, so you're, so.
My, oh, I'm amending it as we just discussed, and then she's gonna have the draft covenant amended to include the reference to the site plan.
So how does the new requirement that we've had to put project limiting fence, um, tie into this, how do we make sure that?
Well, and if, if it said that that is applicable, it's gonna apply to anything.
Right, in this particular instance, it's not applicable because the grades are already been modified.
It's already been done.
But I, but that was a note that I had for myself, in that when we see resolutions and, and we should, I think that should be included in every resolution where there's an APod, a piece of land, I know that's our process. But shouldn't we actually delineate it to make sure that it's act- that it actually happens?
I don't, I don't disagree, but in this particular instance.
I'm not, I'm just bringing it up because we discussed.
And that's what we discussed, so in our future resolutions where we have site plan and, and potentially even subdivisions, we can add, we will be adding.
I'm pretty sure what I read today, or for today, has some, uh, clearing, uh, I, APod, sorry.
Okay, so we want to make sure that it's included.
That's why I made the note, because I didn't see it in anything I read for today's meeting, and, so.
Right, so not in this particular instance, but for any particular.
So I'm just gonna look for that as we go through this afternoon.
So we want to do the two, the two items?
I have, I have a mistake.
It, I don't know why it's not on there.
It's in three places.
Three actions, it's approving the site plan, the amended site plan, it's also approving the covenant amendment for the common driveway, which you agreed was acceptable, and also the site disturbance application. Um, it's all in one resolution, it's across the board.
So best to, best to adopt it in one?
You can do that, Sarah, right?
Claire?
Best to adopt this in one?
Sure, it would just have to be three resolves.
Yeah, I believe that's what I have, but I'm not a hundred percent here. Yes, I have three resolves.
Oh, you have it down here, right, okay. All right, any other conversation? Maybe, we don't have a, they're aware of what we're doing, the applicant?
Yes, yeah, we've had emails back and forth all day.
On Zoom, Kevin?
No one has their hand up?
Okay, so motion to approve. Motion, the bridge site plan, site plan disturbance covenant amendment by Gloria, second by Kate, all in favor? Close extension, six in favor, one absent, thanks Teresa for working that out. Anthony, ten fifty-two, Noyak?
Uh, yes, you have the report for a few weeks now, but the attorney today requested it adjourned, he couldn't be here, so, what we're gonna do, and this one's gonna require, you know, him being here to have discussions, so. We'll do an extension of the action deadline until May twenty-second.
Second extension to May twenty-third, motion by Dennis, second by Kate, all in favor? Close extension, six in favor, one absent. Claire, Citron nineteen, Montauk.
Uh, yeah, so I think John Wagner is here for that one, number five.
Send him over now.
Perfect, so this is, um, pretty straightforward, everybody familiar with this, that was the nightclub and it turned into eleven condo units. One of the units is affordable, which is great, um, just, there was just tidying up now, she had the first couple COs on it, but one of the provisions of the co- of the covenant, which wasn't in your resolution, said, um, it's required an affordability covenant, but it went on, the covenant went on to say that none of the units could be rented, even the non-affordable ones. Um, so that is, there's no restriction, I don't think you have any problem, if they get the proper rental permits, they could rent it. Um, so the applicant is here, John Wagner. Is, uh, so he asked for an amendment to the covenant, now we, when we looked at the covenant, it also has some things that language is not really correct, so I had Kara look at it too. She had no, um, as the housing director, she had no objection to the ten of the units having been able to rented, the one for affordable has to be owner occupied, so that will continue in the covenants. Um, and then she did say that there was some restrictive language in there, um, she said have to, had to do with, um, that they could turn, that the unit for affordable could turn back into market rate if they brought a credit in, and that, it's apples and oranges, in this case, it's affordable caught because of the ZBA decision.
In perpetuity.
It wasn't some kind of like bonus density incentive or anything like that, so, um, so we're gonna change that covenant language too, so John Wagner prepared a document, I do have them, I have all the old one, the new one for you. Um, I did give it to Christine today to take a peek at too, um, but subject to Kara looking at the final one, just like she would do for any of these, make sure the language is good.
What I just heard you say, these were all rentals, and one of them was?
Condos, it's eleven condos.
But they're rentals?
Um, they could, the owner could get a rental permit and rent it out per our code.
But you, I think I heard you say that the affordable unit has to be owner occupied?
Correct.
So that means that the owner of the development has to live there?
The owner of the unit has to live there. They're being sold it to that for, as affordable.
Well, I heard it was rental, so I didn't, did not realize they were being sold.
They're condos, so they own, people buy the condo units. What it, this, what he's asking for is, um, to allow them, just like any house, any condo in the town of Southampton, that they could go and get a rental permit to allow somebody else to rent their condo.
The individual owner, similar to the c- the covenant amendment for the place on Montauk Highway by Carvels?
Yes.
Okay.
Very similar to that, yep.
I don't, Claire, maybe, or John can respond to this, do you need to modify the prospectus with New York State if it's a condominium prospectus that allows for the rental of the unit?
Yes, can you hear me?
Can't hear you.
A little bit louder, John.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, I'm just gonna yell a little bit, um, yes, my office is handling the, uh, the offering plan, uh, documentation with the state, so, uh, my, my partner's actually handling that, but, uh, we are going to be addressing that, that's actually how this came up. That we came across this declaration that was inconsistent with what, uh, was been proposed to the state on this matter.
Do we need to have that before we can act on this, or?
No, but we can make a reference to it and say that the offering plan should be amended to be consistent with the covenant, does that make sense, John?
Yes, what, what we're going to do is, when we have the amended covenant, the amended covenant will be incorporated with the, with the documents on file with the state going forward.
Do you need approval from the state?
It's designed, it's designed to substitute for the prior recorded declaration, which does not, really not make any sense.
I'm gonna say it's to be made part of the amended offering plan, does that make sense?
That's fine.
Okay. Okay, and then subject to tear, I'm sorry, Kara back's final, final approval before filing.
Okay, great.
Okay, um, so yeah, I have a resolution to that effect, um, speaks about, uh, how this happens and, and the amendments.
Do you have it, Claire?
I do have a copy, if you'd like to, like to do this. And I would just add the changes.
So do you expect that modification to come through quickly, or, John?
Uh, I, I'd like to act on it as quickly as possible, yes, because it is holding up some of the processes we have with the state right now.
You have enough? I have one more.
Okay, so we're tying, we're tying our approval into
Yes.
The approved modification by the state on the pers- modified prospectus.
Right, so if you see, I went to the whereas as that I didn't do the resolved spots, um, I will say the planning board reviewed, um, the amendment's language and found the same to be acceptable and say resolved. The planning board hereby approves the amendment to the covenant, um, to permit the non-affordable units to be allowed to be rented. I should, I should say it's pursuant to the code, right?
Claire, you wanna, you wanna add more to this and then come back a little bit?
Yeah, I could be glad.
Yeah, 'cause it's too much amending, I would, I would feel comfortable with it.
Yeah, John, I'll just bring it up, and I'm sorry, John, you should introduce yourself and with your company too.
Yes, yes, I'm, I'm John Wagner, I'm the attorney for the applicant for the modification.
Um, and then I'll amend this, I'll bring the language back this afternoon.
Perfect.
Great, thank you, Claire.
Thank you.
Uh, Teresa, Rivian.
I'm gonna stay here because we're gonna tag team with the next one too.
Okay, good. Teresa and Claire. They're, they're.
Do you have a plans, Teresa?
I don't actually have a plan.
They're working away.
Yes.
Are they on, say, on your thing, so we can put it up? Yes, yes, come on up with your plans.
So actually, this discussion is ties in with the next one as well, so for Chrysler, uh, Jeep.
Oh, right.
Um, so these are, uh, Rivian lot owns two lots, one Montauk Highway water mill, and then, uh, seven sixty-nine, County Road thirty-nine. Uh, yes, thirty-nine.
This is, this is the, uh, design there.
Is this a cross access?
Yeah, they're right on my desk.
Okay, I'm gonna grab the plans.
Um, again, there was some back and forth regarding the cross access for, for the Rivian site over, uh, the vacant parcel to the Chrysler Dodge. Um, Jeep dealership site, um, we had approved a plan that showed bringing it along the back of the, of the, uh, of the vacant parcel. And, um, it was determined afterwards that that wasn't really workable for the, uh, adjacent parcel. So, um, at the last public hearing for the Jeep Chrysler, which was May eighth, I believe, is that right? No, April eighth, or April, April tenth, I'm sorry, I got the dates all mixed up. Uh, so the public hearing for Chrysler Jeep was on April tenth, there was some back and forth discussions during the public hearing. And after the public hearing, there were some discuss, further discussions between our office and the two applicants. And an alternative plan was submitted and provided and discussed, and you have a copy of that alternative plan from the Chrysler Jeep dealership. And, um, Claire just ran down to get the, uh, Rivian end, um, and I have a letter indicating that they have agreed, uh, Rivian has agreed to the amended plan with Jeep Chrysler, and, um, they submitted that and that stated May fifth, twenty twenty-five, I'm sorry, May first, twenty twenty-five, and it was prepared by Dynamic Engineering. Um, they submitted an amended site plan application to go with that, and I am, uh, you'll see here, it says, whereas the planning board finds that there shall be no exit from the property until Montauk Highway or County Road thirty-nine. Exit, uh, acts, exit only permitted over a cross access. And then it approves the amended site plan, which again, Claire's bringing up. Um, the conditions outlined by this resolution are generally consistent with the previous one, they're still working away, so I didn't wanna uh, eliminate all the conditions that were held by the first resolution. Um, but mainly it, it adopts this new, um, new cross access.
And they're both in agreement.
And they're both in agreement.
So are we on Rivian or are we on Chrysler Dodge?
We're on Rivian technically.
Is there a map that shows both?
So I, uh, Claire ran to grab the, uh, Chrysler Dodge, 'cause I forgot to bring it up, uh, I'm not sorry, not Chrysler Dodge, Rivian.
We have the Chrysler Dodge.
We have the Chrysler Dodge, that's what got me confused.
Yes, she's getting the Rivian project plans, I apologize, and, um, it shows technically all three parcels.
Okay.
Okay?
So Teresa, coming down that side of the building, coming down the side of the, um, Chrysler building. Uh, there are a whole stand of trees, so I'm a little, are they going to be taking those trees away, or?
No, I believe there's just gonna be a small area where the trees may have to be removed and then, and then it would, you know.
Okay, 'cause you can see it on the, if we can blow that up, Anthony. You see the stand of trees on that side of the building?
Right, and that area is wide enough to accommodate the two ranges of traffic.
There we are.
Um, so I don't believe they're gonna have to remove that many trees, they may have to remove one or two, but shouldn't be that many.
Welcome.
Oh, it shows the big tree. Shows the big tree remaining.
Okay, this is Rivian. Yeah, yeah.
So you see, the par- the, the map does show all three parcels, including.
So for Rivian, they're gonna enter here.
That was our making, sir.
Goes all the way around, and then in front, they exit in front.
Right, and now keep in mind, the lot in, in between the two lots is vacant, so at some point, the, the cross access may be further reconfigured.
Yeah.
Um, but at this point in time, this works for both.
Both of them.
Is there any signage or modification of that curb cut to discourage left turns from?
Yes, it was on the site plan, there's no left, I believe there's signage that says no left turns.
Entering the site from the other side.
It's going to, see, it's modified, so you can't.
I'm wondering, should, should we sort of? Be channelized and? Channelize it somehow, or?
No.
It is bent a little, you can see that, right?
They had said they would do something, and it looks like a little, not a lot, but.
If the only way to enter is from County Road thirty-nine, did we not talk about some sort of signage on the Chrysler?
They both show a sign, and it'll be subject to your review.
Okay.
Both plans show a sign, Rivian's and, uh, Chrysler's.
What are we getting, six, six, uh, ele- uh, charging stations on this, on Rivian, six?
I believe so, yes.
And the lounge, I think, right?
Right, it's, right, so somewhere for them to hang out while they're, they're charging their cars.
Okay.
And the home petting.
Did we look at a landscaping plan here?
Yes, we approved a landscaping plan.
Okay. 'Cause it sure needs it, you know, that.
And I know that they are preparing the application for signage for Rivian, I met with the, uh, the applicant's designer.
Teresa, can you hear me?
I don't see a landscaping.
You have someone on the?
Hi, Chris, this is, um, Hill, is the applicant's.
Identify yourself, the record.
Sure, thank you, hopefully you can hear me, if not, please let me know. Uh, Joe Pappero from Porzio, Bromberg, and Newman on behalf of Rivian, um, obviously, we have our team available, I know there were some planned comments, if there's any uh, questions or comments, we do have our engineer from the original approval that could answer, uh, those questions and certainly share the, the plan on the screen with you. Um, so I didn't want anyone to think we weren't here to answer those questions.
Do, have, has anyone reviewed the sign, sign to make sure it's, serves the purpose?
Not yet, that's gonna come into us.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it doesn't look like it will, looks like, if this is the sign here, that's after where you'd enter, if you're coming this way, coming from the west going inside.
I thought there was a location that you spoke about, right in front.
Well, it's be, it's beyond.
Otherwise, you couldn't do it, could you do it on the other parcel? I mean, would it be the other?
You showed the sign.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
But will it be its own dedicated sign just for Rivian, or will it be part of the menu sign?
Well, it's gonna have to have some type of direction.
Yeah.
And so they've labeled it directional sign.
So it's an.
Directional, standalone, just for Rivian.
It may, it may be a dual purpose sign, Rivian this way, Chrysler Dodge this way, but I think that's.
The one on the, on the side, the one here.
It's a shared.
It's a shared.
Proposed pylon shared sign.
Would it make sense to have Rivian have its own sign?
I don't, I don't know if that, if we wanna have more signage.
Well, I'm just, I'm just wondering, could you have more of that sign without us variance?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's com- it com- it should look fine, how many? It's Rivian and it's Chrysler Dodge, it's, that's it.
People are going to be going, heading to the blue dot, blue dots up here.
So they're going to enter, go all the way around.
There's another entrance here.
And then we have a sign here, correct, on the?
Well, that's for westbound traffic.
Yeah, for westbound traffic, there's a sign.
We want to discourage.
But we want to be able to make a right turn in.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but it's only one way in. Right, it's one way in.
You have to have a share sign, otherwise they won't know that they're going into either Chrysler or Rivian.
Rivian enter.
Wouldn't be fair to one or the other.
And you'll know it's Chrysler because.
Exactly.
The signage will be there.
We'll have a Rivian sign at the entrance on twenty-seven.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, and you can only go one way in here, you know? Either take advantage of the service and then you'll exit.
I would imagine if it does have both, you know, the Rivian would have like the arrow, obviously, say.
Yes.
Go east. And that's, but you'll be reviewing that in the next month when they come up with it, yeah.
Or. Will be, right. Okay. And there are all trees in that area, which is nice, right?
So again.
Any landscaping around the building, are there some trees?
On the Rivian site, yes, there is an extensive landscaping plan that was provided on the original application and all of that will still hold as part of their site plan
Okay.
that they're working away on. I did put the conditions, most of the conditions are still pulled overs from the last application. HVAC systems, you know, compliance with the new light, dark skies, lighting code. OPA system, screening, all of that's as for the last approval, that all holds. This is just approving the cross access.
So it's a separate resolution for?
There will be a separate resolution for Chrysler Dodge, this one is just for Rivian.
Okay.
And just for the cross acc?
Just for the cross access. But again, some of the conditions were moved over because they're still underway and they haven't implemented some of that one.
Okay, so what's our action here?
We are going to adopt the resolution granting conditional approval of the revised cross access plans.
I'll move it.
Uh, any other questions? Okay, motion by Dennis, seconded by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Post extensions, six in favor, one absent.
Thank you.
And.
Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
And so we're going to do Chrysler Dodge.
Chrysler Dodge, next.
So we talked about this one, we did the staff report last meeting. This is the applicant's representative, this is the plan.
Hi.
There was two versions, sorry, there's only two, but, um, but you, now we know the cross access is the hard part, right? And then, so I have a resolution. The other question, the applicant had asked for permission to commence the building permit for the exterior renovations. And you'd ask for a sample.
Yeah, the sign, yeah, the signage, are we looking at?
Sign, yeah.
It's a siding, yeah.
Because you guys are interested in the bamboo and the silver is being used.
Interesting bamboo.
So this is the.
Yeah, it's not bamboo, it's the, it's on, it's faux on.
Yeah, it's faux.
A metal.
But it's an interesting, uh, com- combination with something very modern and.
Leaves a nice textured look, but it's, you know, same materials, the other courses are.
Very attractive.
Yeah, I think so, it's an upgrade.
ARB, like?
ARB approved it, um, they wanted some adjustments to the signage, so I left the signage as an issue to, and we needed anyways with the directional sign.
How many?
ARB needs to approve it, yeah.
How many, you mean the building signs, right?
Yes, yes.
How many do we have up there?
So we have two on one side and then technically one, two, three, four on the front that's facing, um, seven, uh, fifty-nine.
County Road thirty-nine.
Yeah, County Road.
So that's, what are they? Chrysler?
Chrysler Dodge.
Jeep?
And Ram, yeah.
And Ram?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all pretty much the same size, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know if you want the sheet.
Are the, do we have, uh, colors or what?
We are not going to review the sign yet, we need ARB to approve it. They had some questions about sizing, they think they've adjusted them. We're going to re-refer it, get their comments and do all the signage together. So I have left, I have a whereas in here that we're, you're not approving the sign.
Okay, good.
We've got a lot, a lot of letters for some, and for some less letter, so it'll be interesting to make it all look smattering.
Yeah, yeah. Chrysler.
Dodge, Ram.
Jeep looks huge.
I think that's the one that we might need to make a little bit smaller, we made the other Jeep sign smaller because that was like two foot ten, so we brought it down to two feet to match the Southampton sign.
Right.
But, um.
But still more, right? Oh, that'll look nice. So this is the facing, this, this is facing County Road thirty-nine?
That is, and then the other one is facing the interior, but you're allowed to do that because of the cross access. So you're allowed to have signage on the cross access side.
Right.
Well, it's nice because you don't have a lot of glass with glaring lights coming out.
I did still have that as a condition.
Yes, good.
Good job. But it should, it should be fine.
All right, Claire, so you want to go?
So yeah, we can do the conditions, as I said, I included, um, a, a whereas just above the resolve that says that the signage needs to be revised per the ARB comments and approved by the ARB prior to the planning board taking action on the signs. And so this would be the approval for the permission, Chrysler Dodge Jeep and Ram. The issuance of a building permit for the exterior renovation is shown on the building plans, such as the following conditions. The two conditions are the submission of an affidavit says that the bill comply to all these conditions with the cross access and such. And the second one is that permission is not granted for the signage, as I just discussed. So the resolved would be to adopt the May eighth staff report and approve the site plan. And that would be subject to all changes and modifications to the site plan. Um, you're, the staff report did reference two charging stations.
Mm-hmm.
I think it makes sense, car dealership.
Sure.
So, uh, to indicate that, um, compliance with Department of Public Safety and indicate additional plantings, um, in the form of low bushes or grasses south of the cross access to screen the excess driveway. I think it's becoming, it's more active before, there's no landscaping on this, that site, so we'd want to see something. I did say subject to your approval, but it could be me who looks at it, it's up to you which one. I could look at it or if you want to look at it, okay.
I know you want to get moving on this, right, or you are moving on it.
So I'll place, subject to staff approval.
Yeah.
Maybe just one of these charging stations, we want to get like a boilerplate, it's an internal illumination.
Oh, with a signage?
Oh, well, just no, not illuminated.
Okay.
You know, that's eternal, you know which ones I'm talking about.
Yeah, without internally illuminated signs. I know, we're wrestling with that, whether to put that in the town code with signage.
Well, right now we're doing.
Have a small like foot, square foot, like sign on some of these things, but, yeah, but.
Well, it's illumination we're more concerned with.
Mm-hmm.
Like glowing, you know, light bulb.
Advertisements, yeah, exactly.
Number one, Claire, sorry to go back to that on your, before the resolves.
Yep.
The current landowners have compliance with the conditions of, should we not mention, say the word cross, cross access somewhere in that?
Yeah, we can say that, including cross access.
Okay.
That's my standard, that's our standard boilerplate language for the affidavit, so I just cut and pasted it here.
Right, so including.
I still have it in the rest of the section too.
Okay.
But I can say including cross access. Yeah, no problem. The general conditions, AFC HVAC systems to be screened, uh, no dusted on lighting fixtures, proposed lighting should be shielded, no public address system, dumpster should be enclosed. And this is the interior lighting shall be designed in such a way to not emit an exterior glow. In addition, any glass used for the front of the building shall be non-glare. Items to be submitted, town engineer fee, submission of cross access easements between such a property and the property immediately adjacent to the east from the property owner, title search, mortgage consent, town attorney approval. I, I'm going to cross out F because I'm going to, staff is going to approve the landscaping. Affidavit, six sets of plans and all existing lighting should be brought into performance. I think the site looks good, I just want to catch all, just in case there's some non-performing lights there.
Okay.
Are you considering having storage behind the building, correct, of cars?
Yes, they have cars all over the place.
We never say anything about this and it's a, it's an opportunity to say it. I mean. The, the cars on the vacant lot are yours or not?
No.
They're not yours, they're just behind?
It's on our lot and then we share the lot behind us.
So Rivian, a condition of that approval is those, those cars on that vacant lot are to be removed?
To be removed, but I'm just looking at, it's just one row of cars that we're looking at in terms of car storage.
Oh, they have this, they all work in conjunction, all those one, two, three, three sites work in conjunction with each other.
Okay. I mean, I asked the question because they didn't want the cross access in that direction because they had.
Activity.
Safe activity and it's, I'm, I'm just curious where the activity is and is, have we defined it on our site plan?
So what happens in, the concern of the applicant was, are you?
That's fine, because I also have the plan right, that might be easier to kind of see it. Because there's an existing service drive that was like the biggest concern. So at the end of the building, there's people coming and leaving the service drive and causing a lot of traffic as well as us coming and going from the other site, so.
Where is that, where is the service drive?
So it's at the end of the building? It's over here.
The back end, right in there, mm-hmm.
See where the black part of the roof is?
That's the service?
Yeah.
So you have people coming and going in there?
Yeah, the cars are coming in and out for the service.
And they come in from County Road thirty-nine into your regular entrance, right?
Yeah.
I see, so you wanted to keep that lane dedicated to you.
Yeah, because if we had another service, like other cars coming in and out right here, it's just, there's a lot going on.
It's like your back of house, right? So people come in, they check in at the front desk and then your, like, service technician sends their cars back to the garage and take care of it.
Mm-hmm.
Cross access in the front of the space as well, so it's, they're coming through.
Can't take comment more, uh, unless you're the applicant.
They're raising their hand.
Oh, someone's raising their hand on Zoom.
Yeah.
Is one of your team on Zoom?
Yes.
I don't know who's on Zoom right now.
Justin Ackerman just raised his hand.
Is that Rivian?
Rivian?
What's that?
Okay.
Is it one of your people?
Yes.
It is?
No, Rivian.
It's Rivian, yeah.
Oh, it's Rivian, yeah, we finished Rivian.
Yeah, but it's to do with this.
Uh, we can't comment.
Think we can't take comment.
You gotta say it right.
Should we reopen Rivian after?
Well, we can reopen, yeah, because we have to get more wordage on Rivian now, because we're, we're going to write something.
Sure, I'd like the planner, did we hear the?
Teresa.
Teresa, yeah, okay. So we can move forward with this, Claire? We can move forward with this?
Yes, we can adopt this and then if Rivian wants to speak again on the replication.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so you have outdoor storage and display, planning board's concerned with continued violation of the front transition yard.
That's why the plantings, that's why I wanted the plantings, that's another reason besides the screening is the plantings.
Okay, and we'll look at the sign after.
Sign will be a future design for Rivian.
Okay, great. Any other questions on this, motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria and seconded by David? All in favor?
Aye.
For a extension, six in favor and one absent.
Thank you.
Have we finalized Rivian yet?
Uh, you approved, approved the amendment.
We approved the cross access, we approved the cross access.
But we didn't finalize the site plan yet.
It's approved, signed.
We've been working on it for a long time.
And a building permit's going to shoot, yeah.
Yeah, I know the building permit, did we address car parking and the display of vehicles in the front?
You'd set, you had a very specific, it's not my site plan, but a very specific area where.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Thank you anymore, thank you so much.
The car dealership directly to the east, it's taken upon themselves to park some more.
Directly to the east of Rivian?
Yes.
Oh.
I won't mention any names, but it rhymes with rowdy.
What, I didn't hear what you said.
On the lawn.
Of, of it living?
No.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Teresa, we just. Somebody from Rivian wants to talk, so we want to open up Rivian.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so I move to open the applica, open up the discussion on Rivian?
Yes.
Do we have someone on Zoom?
Hello?
We have two people coming on now.
Okay.
Can you guys hear me, sorry?
We're working too fast.
We go, yeah, there you are, yes, hi.
Justin Ackerman with Rivian, I just wanted to make a really quick clarification on the conversation that was happening about the vacant lot and the cars that are parked in that location, they're, they are not Rivian's, we will make sure that they're cleared out by, uh, as a condition of our approval but current tenants of that Chrysler Dodge location, which I believe is BMW.
Right, that was a condition of your original approval.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to make that clarification.
We got it, Justin, yeah.
Okay, awesome.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Somebody, yes.
Cho's on as a panel, here we go.
No, I'm fine, Justin wanted to speak, I'm Rivian's attorney, so he, he got out what I wanted to get out, that those are not Rivian cars, those are the Chrysler Jeep vehicles.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Okay, so we're closing the con, the conversation?
Yeah, so it'll be just, uh, it'll appear on the minutes like a discussion on Rivian.
Okay.
Sorry, now you're back.
Thanks Teresa, I'm sorry.
You can go now.
We don't, I don't want to secretly do things to her, okay.
Thank you, have a nice evening.
Anthony, Charlie Fox.
Uh, yes, so I have the property up here, this is a new application, this is a request for a pre-submission conference. So this is the pre-stage of a site plan special exception application. Uh, this is for another cannabis retail. Uh, this property is located on the north side of County Route thirty-nine, highway business. Um, you'll see, it's just to the east of the corner of McGee Street. Um, and the, uh, the rear of this property, you'll see, abuts the school property on McGee Street. And actually, this vacant property is also a school property. We have a letter, and I probably sent it to the board, it'll, it'll pop up, I'm sure, when we have the pre-submission conference. There is a, a letter from the Office of Cannabis Management pointing out their regulations and our regulations. And our regulations mimic theirs and it says, uh, it can't be, a cannabis facility cannot be within five hundred feet and on the same street as a school. And so that's how our regulations are written, so the Office of Cannabis Management notes that, that school is not located on the same street and their license was issued and so forth, and they, they indicate compliance with that standard. I'm aware it's abutting the school, I'm aware that there's general special exception standards.
General standards.
We're going to have to consider one of them being, is it appropriately, you know, not appropriate, inappropriate.
What is, what is this special, what is the second special standard state?
The general standard is appropriate for the area.
The general, that the planning board shall find that it's not unsuitably located near a school, place of worship, a community center and so forth. Um, so that's an issue.
That supersedes.
Within, I thought that was in this special exception standards, isn't there separation requirement?
There's the, the specific.
Those are the cannabis requirements.
Not in the general, in the specific.
We're talking about our standards.
The general, I'm talking about the general.
There's nothing specific, other than it's general says it shall not be, the planning board shall find it's not unsuitably located near. And so, you know, I spoke to the applicant about this, the other side of it is, it is residentially zoned, so there's transitional setbacks and things that we're going to have to look at. So I think this particular site, there's going to be a lot that's going to come out of this pre-submission conference report, so I just want to.
Particularly about the general standards, which supersedes the New York State cannabis law.
Well, I mean, what I would say is it's, it's.
Has to be both.
Has to be both, and so you have to meet all your standards, so. Uh, but in any case, I was going to recommend that we schedule the pre-submission conference for June twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-five.
Motion.
Does the applicant want to speak?
Council for the applicant, if the board has any questions.
Nope.
June twenty-sixth?
June twenty-sixth?
Yeah.
Public hearing. Um, this was also a parcel that has a very narrow entrance, as I remember.
This is right next to Surf Pro.
Yeah, I was going to say it's next to Surf Pro.
And then they began to fence it off, right?
Right. Yeah, because we were looking at the cross access.
We were looking at cross access and there was no way. Looking at cross access and there was no way. Okay, un- unless you have anything to say to us, no?
Um, I have nothing to add, Mr. President did a very good job of explaining and, um, obviously when we get to our special exception petition, we can discuss the, the relationships.
Just your name for the record?
George John Workwood B. Isnboyd, O U R, Q U A, Anne Greenberg Schrowing, of Ridgefield.
Great, thank you, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so motion for to set the public hearing for June twenty-sixth.
I said motion.
So you said motion and you said seconded, uh, all in favor, opposed, extension, six in favor, one absent. Anthony fourteen fifty-six S R R L L C.
I have handed, uh, the board. Uh, the report and I have hard copy. The board's familiar with the site, uh, this is an LI forty zone piece of property, it's on Spion Riverhead Road. The forty site just to the north here, um, which was built out. Uh, this is a site plan application, uh, for the construction of roughly, uh, twenty-five thousand square feet of special trade contractor uses. The property's two point eight two acres, um, has a pre-existing house on there, um, and some, uh, significant clearing. Uh, and then a bunch of dead vegetation, and Suzanne, a couple of years ago, came in with the presentation with all the pictures showing. Piles of debris and everything else, I could sort of, sort of see them sitting in there, so a big part of this site plan application is a, a revegetation plan.
Is it pine beetle devastation?
Uh, that I don't know, um, it's hard to say, um, but, uh, in any case, what we're gonna do is we're gonna do the staff report. Uh, and then we'll do the resolution next time, I'll, I'll stretch something up. So if you just go to the, uh, second page. Um, we had a public hearing in October, a ten day written comment period and no comments were received. Uh, cause it's over fifty parking spaces, this was a type one action under secret and back in September of twenty twenty-four. And we did coordinate with all the involved agencies and this board issued a negative declaration. Uh, referral comments, uh, we're pending, uh, final comments from the engineer, but we do note. Uh, that final, uh, engineer approval stand plans are required of any site plan, so obviously, um, that'll be incorporated. Uh, we got comments from the Office of Fire Prevention, um, all the standard comments, uh, one of them, they said drainage and leaching pools. Uh, that's on top of page three, uh, to be relocated out of roadways or capable of supporting the heaviest apparatus of the fire department. Um, so that will be made a condition of approval, uh, then it notes, it says the area served by public service water mains and fire hydrants. Then it says the nearest fire hydrant is in excess of six hundred feet and they're recommending a fire hydrant. Uh, however, um, Fire District didn't make that recommendation and looking at, uh, G I S. Uh, in fact, there's, uh, two, um, fire hydrants, uh, on the other side of the road, there's one right down here, which is just to the south of this property. Uh, and one up here as well, um, so I'm not really sure.
But it's at that, isn't the thousand feet the standard?
Yeah, they said here six hundred feet, but, uh, I don't know if they were not aware, uh, that there's two hydrants, uh, on this road. Uh, and that's, and the Fire District didn't come back with any recommendations.
Maybe trying to get it on the same side of the road, that might be.
I'll, I'll, I'll leave you for the board to have a discussion and, um, that's that. Um, Architectural Review Board approved the plan, it's a Morton building, obviously, um, pretty standard. Um, and they approved it back in November, uh, the Highway Department didn't have any recommendations. The Fire District didn't have any further recommendations, and then the Pine Barrens, uh, just came back, uh, stating that this qualifies as what would be development. Uh, and the Pine Barrens, and they're subject to the, uh, club standards, uh. This is a reminder to the board, with the Pine Barrens, it's, it's the municipality that's required for administrated, administering the, the requirements. Uh, what's interesting about this case is our code allows fifty percent clearing for commercial, the Pine Barrens will allow you to go up to sixty-five percent. Initially, and what we were doing is allowing people to go up to the sixty-five percent with the transfer of Pine Barrens credits. And because the Pine Barrens allowed, uh, up to sixty-five percent, you didn't have to go in for a hardship. The Pine Barrens have changed their regulations and basically what they said was, they're, you're subject to the more restrictive. Of the clearing restrictions, i.e. the towns, and if you wanna go higher than the fifty percent, you have to go in for a hardship, so. You know, I suppose that option's still available to the applicant, but I geared the resolution to.
But we have issues with, with, with clearing, if I recall correctly, the buildings they wanna put up. Is, will get it, get the beyond the fifty percent.
Yeah, they're at like fifty-three, so they're not, they're not far off, to me, a more, a better approach just to amend the plan instead of the time and cost to go through.
How large is the building, how many square feet?
Uh, the two of them, there's two buildings and it's gonna be twenty-five thousand, twenty-four thousand and change total. Um, and then those were the only comments that we got, the big one, um, is the hope to get the engineer. Um, so page four, we have the special exception standards, um, the first one that they use will be in harmony and promote the general purpose and intent of this chapter. That's a special trade contractor consistent with what LI forty typically allows, it's a fairly consistent, and you'll see. Uh, we're getting, we got a lot of special trade contractor, uh, applications, um, it's just the nature of people trying to get their. Their businesses and as much of their stuff sitting in buildings out here, um. Uh, B talks about the plot area being sufficient, uh, we're at two point eight acres, well over the forty thousand square foot minimum. Um, proposed use does not prevent the orderly and reasonable use of adjacent properties, uh, they are all within the LI forty. Um, there were no cross access setup with any of the properties to the north or the south, and probably doesn't look like it's really. Good at work or do anything to have cross access in this case, you don't do it a lot of times. Certain industrial properties, um, you know, unless we're doing a much larger site plan in an industrial complex, which we have done. Um, the site is particularly suitable, uh, again, it's LI forty zone, so that's one of the locations where we want these. Uh, E, here's that statement, the characteristics of the proposed use are such that it's not, that its proposed location would not be unsuitably near a church, school, theater, recreational area. Other case of public place, public assembly, uh, so there's no such, uh, uses in this area. F talks about the non-nusance industry conforming to whatever chapter definition of the special exception use. Uh, in this case, there is no town code definition of special trade contractor, but we're aware, uh, that we reviewed similar applications and they include. That's what I'm limited to, electrical work, plumbing, H V A C, roofing, landscaping.
Maybe we should put that in our code.
So there you go. Um, access facilities are, uh, adequate and appropriate and we're not within seventy-five feet of a, uh, intersection. Uh, here, we're gonna be eliminating the double access, it's gonna be one way in, one way out, uh, and we're certainly not within seventy feet, seventy-five feet of an intersection. Uh, all curb cuts have been approved by the Highway Agency, uh, so we'll go to the Highway Department for a curb cut here. Uh, the off-street and parking, uh, spaces comply with the town code, uh, and they do, uh, we did the calculations and they worked out. Um, then we talked about, uh, buffers and screening and all the rest of it, so in here, that's where I put the discussion about the APod and the central Pine Barrens. They're, they're looking at fifty-three percent clearing, and so we're just gonna recommend that they amend the site plan to come in with fifty percent clearing and then they. Uh, their revenge plan also be permitted.
So Anthony, where do we put the project limiting fence, it's all A P O D?
Yep.
We will put the project limiting fence and I'll, I'll make sure I have good language in the, but the project limiting fence should always be on the, um. You know, the, the outward edge of the, of the vegetation line, like literally right at that line on the landward edge, if it, you know, something like.
We actually wrote it.
Yeah, you know, you have the language, I don't have a resolution, so I don't have the language in here, um, but I'm, I'm aware of it.
Put it in here or?
We probably should.
I think it should go in the staff's report and the resolution.
Yeah.
Let's hit it on the head.
Yeah.
So let me, let me put in, I'm just for the board's note, I will add the language regarding the project limiting fence.
Thank you. I could ch- check that off my notes.
There you go. Um, the collection of, uh. Disposal of stormwater runoff, again, this is gonna, everything has to be contained on site, that's a requirement of the code. Um, and this will be subject to the town, uh, town engineer review and approval, um, and depending on the amount of, uh. Disturbance, a SWIP or Speedies, uh, which Tom will often ask for as a condition. Um, the next one talks about, um, outdoor areas, really talks about sales, rental, equipment, storage or display areas. Um, what we try to do on these, uh, commercial industrial site plans, and we'll put it in the resolution. I did it on the last one we did, we like to identify outdoor areas for storage or for work because inevitably, every special trade contractor, the work comes outside.
Period. Yeah.
There's in the site that doesn't have it, so at least if we have a designated area, it gives us some teeth to be able to go there and say, you know, this is where.
This is not, not nice.
So we will, but, so that's what we'll ask for, uh, in this case, I graded out just because that was something. Uh, and in any case, uh, no such areas would be permitted within the front yard or within the fifty feet of the property line. Uh, and M, uh, there actually are no specific standards, um, for a special trade contractor. Uh, so then some remaining site plan issues that we'll deal with in the resolution, the lighting plan, uh, we gotta decrease that kiln down to twenty-seven hundred. Um, we like the mounting height at ten feet, um. Number three, actually, they, I say the photometric data, uh, they actually do have a, a lighting plan with photometric data, actually, and, uh, so that doesn't need to go in there. And then number four is about the lighting, um, coming downward, um, not stilling on to adjacent properties, no dust, dawn fixtures. Uh, and again, number five is repetitive, so I will take that out about the ten feet. Uh, landscaping, um, so we talked about the need to do the clearing calculations again, a landscaping plan to re-vegetate to bring it into compliance and. Uh, Suzanne, uh, did put together an initial plan that's very substantial, uh, and we're gonna approve that separately as a separate plan. Uh, we don't have to prove it as part of this, we just have them come in to revise plan. The big thing is, uh, the interior parking, uh, we're over fifty spaces, so we have to have, um, interior landscaping, um, to help break up the mess in the parking lot. And that's to the tune of, uh, twenty-five square feet for each parking space. Uh, so that has to go in the site plan. Uh, signage, um, has to be approved by the planning board, so we'll make that a condition. Uh, engineering, again, final engineering approval, um, is going to be required, we stamp the plans and then a SWIP plan. And a notice of, uh, intent with the D E C. Uh, the number of uses, um. Yeah, I think, uh, say here, final plan should indicate number of uses, I know we're doing a special trade contractor and, and parking and everything's based on. Um, square footage and sometimes it's hard to pin down number of tenants, you know? Cause sometimes we have, uh, ten spaces shown and someone comes in and they want five of them, and then at the end, you have two tenants in there and not ten, so. If there's any way that the applicant could try to hone in on number of, uh, tenants, I would ask that, maybe they already have plans that they're not aware of. Um, the dumpster, um, so we do have the dumpster locations on the plan, I just do note, uh, cause the parking lot just sort of comes to an end. Uh, that they may want to, uh, they should look at a little turnaround area, so the, uh, trucks coming into the dumpster area could back out, um. Have a little room to maneuver, uh, the septic design is gonna be subject to the Suffolk County Health Department. Uh, all mechanicals shall be, uh, screened, whether on the roof or on the ground. Uh, a note about the Spion Solvet Plume, and so the Health Department may have requirements, um, as it relates to vapor barriers or any other. Mechanism prevents.
Do we, do we know about that?
No, we, uh, cause a lot of times they're dealing with residential properties, um, so I'm not really sure, uh, and because we don't require Health Department approval of the site plan. So who knows when they get there, what, what requirements will be?
Cause all of these, uh, structures are in that.
Yeah.
Plume.
Are they gonna have a basement?
Uh, Suzanne and Herman, I just want to answer that question, cause this came up the last time we were here. And they have already applied to the Health Department, the engineer, um, the septic engineer's been dealing with that, it came up and it was addressed and. I believe that the Health Department didn't have any special requirements related to the.
I haven't seen, I haven't seen any. The Health Department, they have done a number of these and, you, you would across the street and that's never come up, never came up.
They require some notice though on the.
Right, and I think actually somewhere on the site plan, we actually have a note.
There is a note on there, no, there is a note on.
I think you, you probably mentioned that on a previous, uh, round and we, we added a note just making anyone aware that this is within thousand feet of, of the plume.
Yeah.
But the Health Department is really.
Monitoring or anything, no monitoring laws.
No, nothing was required. As of yet, so, and I think they're pretty far along in the Health Department, um, per center.
Uh, and then the other site plan is the sustainability elements that we like to incorporate into the, um, conditional approval, so we'll make sure that happens in there. Um, but beyond that, I think.
You're, you're aware of the, we have a policy now, but, uh, in A P O D, for project limiting fencing has to go up.
Okay, we can, we can definitely add that, I'll work with Anthony.
Yeah, and we have language, uh, where we started.
Language, yeah.
Um.
I just had one question about the engineering, the, it has been referred to the engineer?
It was, um, I don't have the final, see, we did an initial, uh, referral, he had everything he needed. But ultimately, we gotta get his final approval, so, um, we will do that on this process.
I would just, it'd be nice to have that in case there are any comments that we could address now, because.
Hundred percent, I, I agree with you.
My main, my main concern is getting the clearing limit down below fifty percent, we're at fifty-three percent, so we have to eliminate. Over four thousand square feet of current clearing, so I think it's gonna come out of the dumpster area. Cause right now we have a hundred and thirty-five feet between the two rows of dumpsters, I don't think we need that, I don't know off the top of my head if there's a. Requirement for.
Um.
Garbage truck pickup.
In terms of number of, uh, of dumpsters, probably not, but I'll leave you to figure out how you can make.
Yeah, I mean, they could also reduce the size of the buildings.
Well, the buildings are already designed, already approved by the A R B, that the clearing thing was a bit of a surprise due to the change in the policy with the Pine Barrens. So, um, so I think we can do it, that, that's our goal.
If they, just a clarification on the, uh, interior landscaping on the parking lot, the twenty-five square feet per, per parking, um, space, is that a standard requirement? So we're talking about two, uh, roughly two thousand square feet if they're looking for seventy-something.
So that adds more.
Yeah.
Uh, revegetation we need to come up with.
Okay.
Anthony, just a note on page one, the first paragraph, there's a sentence that needs to be completed.
Oh, yes, much of the veg, I left, I'm gonna leave it up to you guys to figure out what I was trying to get at.
Yeah, this, this site was, uh, I mean, there is a residence now up by the road, there's clearing, um, encroachment. From the property to the south, um, and most of the property is disturbed, there were multiple buildings back there at different points that are now gone. There's piles of rubble, there's very little left in there that's native, it's mostly vines and overgrown, um. Invasive understory. Um, it's, there's really nothing worth, worth keeping there.
But the revenge plan that we have is very substantial.
It's gonna be beautiful.
It's gonna be really, I mean, um, the company who, who did the design, just they really believe in diversity of plants and. It's extensive.
It's a dragonfly.
Yeah, dragonfly, they do a really good job.
Um, so I was gonna recommend that, you know, with the addition that you, uh, suggested, uh, that we adopt the staff report.
Any comments?
Motion goes up.
Motion by, uh, Kate, second by Dennis, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, six in favor, one absent.
And then let's just do an extension of the action deadline until May twenty-second of the resolution.
Motion by, uh, Dennis, second by Gloria, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, six in favor, one absent. Thank you. Ninety-four Dune Road.
Oh, do you need that? The applicant? Supposedly.
Did she leave her map here?
No, it's mine, I swear. So, you know, just, the board knows the doctor's site, everyone knows doctors and you know the. Posits for a change in non-conforming use, this is an R eighty zone property, uh, so the application is for a change in non-conforming use, the restaurant arena to. Twenty-five pound of development with accessory structures. Um, as this board knows, a number of years ago, the, the project was, uh, issued a positive declaration. Uh, the applicant had submitted eventually a draft environmental impact statement. We did an initial review, we prepared a memo, the applicants responded to that, we deemed the applicant, the, the D E I S inadequate. For public review, and then we got a, a re-submission, you know, just as a little house cleaning, the, the, the D E I S, um, is. We're doing a determination whether it's adequate, adequate for public review, and then what happens is, and that's gonna be my recommendation when I go through this today. We're gonna have a public hearing on it, they're gonna have to get a ridiculous number of copies, we're gonna have to put it in the library, it's gotta go to everybody. There's gonna be a lot of comments that come in, from this point forward, and I spoke to John about this and I'll pass something next week so we can discuss it. We're gonna hire a consultant moving forward, because then it takes it from this point, uh, through the final, uh, stages, through the preparation of the final impact. Statement and ultimately. and then ultimately to the finding statement, which you are responsible for as the lead agency. So this, there's going to be another whole round of review that's happening, so what's going to happen after we do this? They'll send us the final document, everything gets posted online, everything gets posted. And then I'm going to give you guys the final version of the DEIS, which is going to be the basis of the public hearing and all the comments from the agencies. You'll have that on one, one thing. What I tried to do with this memo is, and I gave you the color version, because it goes through what was missing or what we asked for, and then whether or not they, they provided that information, I thought that was the easiest way to do it. So if you go to page two, we talked about the soil boring last time, and, and about the, the capacity and the structural components of the foundations or whatever they're going to be in light of soil types and everything else, so as I say here in the red, an updated geotechnical report was prepared, it was dated March 25th. In February, they did three additional soaring soil borings, and the data was provided. And they did an analysis of the foundation support system, so they described as a result of soil borings, how the foundations, what the structural components would be and what the design elements would be. Now, whether or not there's more comments about it and, you know, more needs to be done, that'll come out of this review process, so. Then if you go to page, well, three and four, three and four, I outlined some of the, it was the town's coastal resources and water protection plan 2016, I identified policies one, three, four, and nine that I didn't think were adequately addressed, and so the applicant, and by the way, they also highlighted and read in the documents where they made the changes, by the way. So the DEIS has been revised to provide additional analysis of compliance with the town's coastal resource water protection plan and its policies one, three, four, and nine. And then they also, the discussion regarding social and economic impacts has been expanded and includes property loss, property damage, population displacement, as well as the FEMA HOA and loss of personal property costs associated with these impacts. So I think that they provided some additional information there. Go to page five, we talked about, if you remember, Kate, remember, we had a nice discussion about this, about the, what they're proposing versus what could be accomplished under R80, and they've actually added an entire subsection entitled proposed action versus permitted use, and it includes a comparative table. Sanitary flow, parking, you know, comparing R80 zoning and what could be accomplished there versus what they propose with 25 condo units. So that was put in there along with the charts, and I think that's good. And actually, in that section, because they talk about zoning board, board of appeals variances and those standards, and they increased the discussion about the visual impact as it relates to zoning board component, so that was added.
So just a question on that one, I understand it's proposed action versus the permitted use in the R80 zoning district, but what we're really comparing is the pre-existing non-conforming current use against the proposed, so I just want to make sure that that's clearly.
That, that is in there, and that was actually in there from the beginning. My whole thing was, I was just looking at it from the strictly zoning standpoint, you know, what can be permitted R80 versus, you know, what they're proposing, but under the non-conforming, but they did provide an analysis of the, because that was their whole basis of their argument for this application.
But this is so much better compared to what's there.
So Anthony, the amended DEIS is online?
It will be.
It will be.
It will be after we do this today.
Okay.
That, that, that's the whole case, we want to get it to a point where we're comfortable putting it online for people to comment on. Under scenic resources, again, now the DEIS has been revised and includes a more robust discussion about the visual impacts. The analysis acknowledges the visual impacts and analyzes the changes to the landscape and the visual experience caused by the proposed project. This includes value of the project's effects on scenic beauty, the character of the landscape along the designated scenic road, particularly the north side of the road, and how the local residents might perceive those changes, so that was included in there, gives some food for thought. Page five and six, if you go to the top, page six, the affordable housing discussion. The DEIS has been revised to include affordable housing provisions of the town code, so they've outlined it, what the options are. I do have to make one correction, because I raised in here, I said it, I initially, because I was looking at the section that was revised, but there are other sections that talk about affordable housing. So I raised the question of whether or not the applicant removed their preference to pay a fee in lieu of, and they should clarify that. But I'm going to take that out because the DEIS does say in there that the applicant's preference is still to pay a fee in lieu of, but they did outline all the options, so I will, I will revise that statement. The Southampton 400 plus sustainability element, we had the discussion last time about the climate and action plan, and that's going to be addressed in the final EIS. The next one, bottom page six, one of the big issues was that the, the DEIS talks about the various scenarios. Stormwater surge scenarios under, you know, different wind conditions, different tidal conditions. It's detailed, but there was a lot of information in there, and I just wanted clarification on these scenarios so we understood, you know, exactly what, you know, what they were saying and what we were trying to mitigate, so. It expands on the storm surge modeling to simulate various hurricane scenarios, including different wind speeds, storm tracks, and sea levels to determine the potential extent and height of inundation. They further assess the risk of flooding for specific locations and populations, and they consider property damage, infrastructure disruption, evacuation needs. So that discussion has been included. Again, the bottom of page seven, where they talked about visual aesthetic, that has been revised in the DEIS, so we have a visual analysis. And on the page eight, we talked about, but this is just repetitive because of the flooding-related impacts and clarification on the various storm surges. Because again, a lot of the DEIS things pop up multiple times in different discussions. But they did, they gave us, you know, the revised documents, I have all the sheets sitting right here. And so with that, I think they finally, they, we do have a DEIS that has a lot of information in there, I think the comment to public, the comment on it, there's a resolution that you don't have in front of you, just bear with me for a second.
What about the alternatives?
The alternatives, if I remember correctly, no, we had that discussion, you'll see they're crossed out. We talked about the dock facilities, they indicated that the dock facilities, as it says in the DS, are not being removed, so. And then I had talked about the alternative that they came up with, 20 units, I raised the question initially. We said, give us an alternative that reduces the number of units. So I had raised the question, where did you come up with 20, should we be looking at anything else, but the applicant, you know, correctly said, the scope says, give us a reduced plan, didn't say how many to be reduced, so they went with 20, and that's, that's okay.
And how many, as of right? How many houses as of right?
Yeah, it is one, yeah. So, I'm sorry, I did not print this for you, but let me just read it to you, because I think it'll be straightforward, so. It says it's for resolved, it said, be it resolved, the planning board of the town of Southampton finds that the draft environmental impact statement for 94 Dune Road LLC is complete with respect to scope inadequacy for the purposes of commencing public review, and a public hearing on the draft DEIS is scheduled for July 10th, 2025. Be it further resolved than a notice of completion of a draft EIS and notice of secret hearing for the draft EIS, and the site plan for 94 Dune Road owner LLC shall be prepared and filed with the requisite agencies and shall appear in the Southampton press issue on June 26th, 2025. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby directs the applicant to submit 18 copies of the DEIS, prepared as required, to the planning office for the purpose of circulating this document to involved agencies and parties of interest. And finally, be it further resolved that the planning board hereby directs planning staff to circulate the DEIS document to all involved agencies and reported parties of interest, and to make this document available at the Department of Land Management and Planning Office, the Town Clerk's Office, the town Southampton official website, and two local libraries, and I think ours is going to be Quogue and West Hampton, would be the two I would recommend.
What about Hampton Bays?
We have to do two, I'm pretty sure it's two, is it two player?
It is two, so.
Want an extra copy to go to Hampton Bays?
All right, 19, yeah.
So we'll give you 19, just, it doesn't say you can't add another one, so.
How many, how many forests can we kill?
I'm just trying to be, hopefully he goes unpunished.
I'm not punishing him.
I just thought Quogue would be the closest, but most, the biggest one, because I was in East Quogue. He went to West Hampton, they had more choices, you know, and I'm not quite sure.
Whatever you want to do, I don't care.
I'll, I'll add the Hampton Bays one, there's no harm in doing it.
You want an extra copy then, you want 19?
So, so what's our action here?
Action is to deem the DEIS adequate for public review.
Okay, you're going to give us a copy of that resolution, we don't have that resolution, regardless.
If I may add, in terms of the public hearing, because you'll run, you have, have to have a public hearing on the.
Yeah, that's what I said here, I said the hearing is scheduled for July 10th.
Oh, I'm so sorry, just.
Can, can you get some of those printed at Xerox for us?
Yeah, I just read it though, it's, it's ready.
I know, I know you did, but. Well, what's happening on July 10th, Kristen, anything?
She's asking if there's any other things on the agenda.
Oh.
So do we need copies now, is that what you're asking for?
I would, yes, can Kristen make some copies for us?
I, there's no heading on it, I don't have any warehouses, it's just.
It's important that we have it for this, Anthony, I'm sorry. You want to bring it back?
If I got to do a whole resolution then, so, John had to put it on last time, I cannot do it. I did it.
You don't need a heading, you don't need any warehouses, you've made the file, just let me vote on it. Just give it to the chairwoman and she can vote on it.
I, I cannot go downstairs and do it now, Jackie.
I, I heard it, it does what it has to do, warehouses aren't even, warehouses are nice, but as everybody will tell you.
This is, this is for our record keeping.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And, and the final, and the final version that I finish tomorrow is going to be accurate.
That is accurate, though.
My, but my final version will not be draft form, it'll have the warehouses in there. I have the incorrect libraries on there, though.
Just add the one.
We're adding West Hampton?
It's going to be West Hampton, Quogue, and Hampton Bays.
Is everybody comfortable with this?
Yeah.
Okay, I reluctantly say all right, since everybody's okay with it, Anthony.
I'll move it.
Motion by Dennis, second by Gloria, and all in favor? Close of extension, six in favor, one absent.
Thanks, Mel.
Thank you. Jackie, we're going to do 12 and 19 together, because it's Brown Buddha.
Yes, okay.
There's actually two documents attached there, one's the part two, and one's the part three.
Claire? I'm giving this to you, if she can make some copies of it for us.
Okay, you want to know?
Before the end of the day, yeah. Just pencil in a heading.
So Brown Buddha, County Route 39 here, this is a property that previously had a site plan, I'm pretty sure that was a contractor business. So we discussed last time the traffic study, this is one of the few cannabis applications, buildings over 4,000 square feet, so it goes from a type to action to non-existent action.
Can you help me by just telling me where it is?
Oh, yes, sorry about that.
The old pool.
The old, oh yeah, the old pool contractor, and then just to the west was the old.
Where they had those big statues of the gorillas, it's right next to it.
Okay, thank you, I just.
That wasn't identifying property.
I can't keep all the, all of these in my head, so it's helpful to know where it is.
25 years ago, I got into a little fender bender right in front of that building, because I foolishly looked over.
At the gorillas and the animals.
The dinosaurs, yeah.
They're in Riverhead now, Anthony, you can go look at them.
Moving west.
By the river.
Exactly. So we'll just go through the SECRE here, it's pretty straightforward, this, this is really more of a special exception application than the site plan. Aside from maybe eliminating left turns, which I think they've agreed to, and I think the previous site plan already said it, maybe some landscaping, there's not a lot of site planning going on here. But in any case, we'll do the SECRE here, so impacts on land, again, not in this case, they're not really building anything new here, so. Impacts on geological features, there's no significant geological features on this site. Number three, no impacts on surface waters, there's no wetlands on or adjacent to the site. Impacts on groundwater, no, not anticipated, but this particular use to generate any significant sanitary issues. Impact on flooding, no, the site was site planned, I'm not aware of any flooding issues in the road, so I think everything's contained on site, and that'll be a condition of the approval again, like we always do. Impacts on air, not, not expecting any significant impacts on air. Impacts on plants and animals, again, this is a fully developed site, there's no proposed removal of any of the vegetation that's left. Impacts on agricultural resources, no, not within an ag district or near any ag land, or used by ag purposes. Aesthetic resources, not, not here, this property doesn't have any open space potential at this point. Historic and archaeological resources, again, no, not in this case. Same thing with impacts on open space and recreation. No impacts there, no impacts on critical environmental areas, it's not within a critical environmental area. Impacts on transportation, we do say yes, and I do have in my part three notes that, you know, it would be expected to generate some traffic. As more of these open up and, you know, the novelty of it, you know, the newness wears off, I expect the traffic would, would decrease. So that's outlined in the part three there, so we acknowledge that there will be some traffic impact, but not.
And didn't the applicant, the attorney for the applicant say that it was primarily delivery? Yeah.
That's absolutely correct.
One of those was, I'm not sure.
It involves Brown, it was Brown Buddha, but I'm getting the impression that that's the business model in general.
Yeah, okay.
Impacts on energy, not expected here, again, it's an existing building, it's all built out, same thing with impacts noise, odor, and light. Impacts on human health, again, Gloria, take your comment.
You could say, you could say yes.
It depends on who you ask, right?
Yes.
You know, we've been saying no, but I guess, you know, the issue is certainly debatable, right? Consistency with community plans, you know, again, this is consistent with the regulations that were put in place, so. Inconsistent with community character, again, it's an existing building. You know, so sort of what's visually there is there, so I would recommend that we issue a negative declaration for this.
Conversation?
It makes sense.
Yep, motion?
Motion.
By Gloria, second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Close of extension, six in favor, one absent.
Just real quick then, Jackie, number 19, which is Brown Buddha, also. I'm going to recommend that we deem the site plan special exception application complete and schedule the hearing for June 12th.
June 12th.
I had previously, Jackie, accounted for that, so whatever we have for the 12th, it already included that.
Okay, good, so the site, so motion, 19, to deem it complete, Dennis moved it, motion by Dennis, second by Gloria. All in favor?
Aye.
Close of extension, six in favor, one absent. Anthony, you have Wilderness Trail.
Wilderness Trail, they asked for an extension, we're going to do an extension of the SECRE determination until May 22nd.
Till next session, okay, so, motion?
Motion.
Motion by Kate, second by Gloria, all in favor? Close of extension, six in favor, one absent.
Jackie, just real quick, number 21, because I forgot, I just came on at the last minute. We just want to extend the 9/11 Flanders SECRE action deadline until June 26th.
Motion to.
June 26th.
June 26th, okay, motion.
The board is aware, I met with the applicant, Janice and I met with the applicant, and they've, they revised their plans.
Great. Motion by Dennis, second by Gloria, and all in favor? Close of extension, six in favor, one absent.
Thank you, Anthony, thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. So Prerna, you're up. 15, 149 Jagger.
House and alley, sounds like some of you may be aware.
Yes.
I'll put the map here.
Flower?
Yeah, the flower farm, yeah.
The sunflower farm.
Yeah, oh, is it sunflower, oh, yeah. Yeah, oh, is it sunflower, oh, yeah. This is the survey here, and these are copies of your approved site plan, do you have that? I do have one, actually.
That's important, right?
This is, yeah, it's, we can, we can reference it, but they, a lot of the information is repeated on, on this one, I've already looked at it. This is the, I'm keeping one of these for the file, but these are the revegetation plans that were proposed. I have in the packet for you a sketch of that with our planning staff's recommendations.
Okay, so, so set it up, Prenna, what's happened here? Is there an applicant here?
These are on Zoom, Kevin, maybe Tom Paulsonelli or Denia, but I can't talk.
Yeah, Tom's coming on.
I can talk through a little bit. There are larger copies here of my recommendations. So this is the site here, it's, consists of three lots, this smaller shaped lot here. The rectangular lot, this square lot next to it, and then this long lot that takes you out, across Old Country Road. The flower farm, the bulk of the disturbance for the flower farm is all consistent in these two lots here, so it really doesn't touch that. And it's about seventeen, seventeen point six acres total of land. So this is in front of you for a site disturbance with a revegetation plan, we received the application last August. The previous site plan was an approval for disturbing nine point six acres for the establishment of the flower farm. The part of that included, part of the approval included conditions, one of them was to establish buffers. So there's a twenty-five foot buffer. I don't know if you could see the mouse, across this north property line, and then a one hundred foot buffer adjacent to the eastern property line.
Are they there?
They're there, they've been covenanted, they've been disturbed.
Fully?
I'm sorry?
Fully?
No, not fully. The, the owners submitted an application for deer fencing last March, I believe it was. And shortly after, we received an SOS complaint, one of two happened to be the disturbance, clearing and disturbance of the buffers. Later another one came in. Since then, we've gone to the site a few times, one of those inspections included a, a silt fence, or a project limiting fence along the buffers to just make sure they don't clear further, and to allow them to continue prepping the land for the spring. But they, they were confirmed that the, the buffers were disturbed. They submitted a survey, the survey shows that they are ten point zero nine nine five acres cleared, and nine point six is allowed. So they're right at about a half acre over cleared. I asked for clarification on, on that one hundred foot buffer, because that particular area, math isn't called out on the plan like the other areas, but we'll get updated as those surveys, anyway. The revegetation plan submitted on April eighteen, just this past month, and that's what's before you. You have an eight and a half by eleven in the packet, is that okay to read? Those two shaded areas in the, in the hashed buffers. There's a smaller portion in the twenty-five foot buffer, and then a larger portion in the one hundred foot buffer. We've reviewed it, I have reviewed it with a couple of other staff members, including Janice, and we had recommendations. The owners proposed about thirty-two trees overall for both areas, and six hundred shrubs. And that included white oak trees, black cherry trees, and then firms and, and huckleberry bushes. What we did, what we requested or recommended is more trees, and, and changing, including some evergreens. And instead of doing the black cherries, we proposed eastern red cedars. So that's what we're seeing. In the twenty-five foot buffers, we're recommending a mix of evergreens and shrubs. And then in the area that was disturbed in the hundred foot buffer, we're recommending white oaks across the edge of the, of the, of the buffer. Thirty feet apart, all the way across, and then staggered eastern red cedars behind it. And then filling out the whole area with shrubs and grasses.
Is this Marty Shay's planting recommendations?
He looked at it, he went out to the site as well, he, he filled out the, the plant list recommendations, which they've got, the owners have considered and used everything that was on the list. We are recommending the change from the black cherry to the, to the red cedar, just because the site is a little bit dry. And apparently, the black cherries do better in near wetlands or in a wetter climate, and this is just a pretty dry site every time I've gone there.
And we should recommend a, a fence.
Yeah, so, so the ag fence that they've, they've come into for an admin, a little over a year ago, that was put on hold because of the, the clearing. That ag fence will delineate the buffers from the main body, so that's going to become your project limiting fence essentially. And that was addressed in the staff report when it was originally approved. So this addresses the buffers. That brings us to the nine point six overall allowable clearing. So the question that comes to the board, do you want the applicant, the owners, to plant back to nine point six acres? Or do we want to consider amending the covenant, which would mean a majority plus one, as well as a public hearing?
Give us the numbers, the difference?
It's, it says that it's ten point zero nine nine, where nine point six, so it's rough, like just under a half acre. I would like clarification, I think, or when we get the updated surveys, it'll show the area for the one hundred foot buffer that was disturbed, because that isn't explicitly called out, like all the other areas. There were two small areas around the existing home that were originally proposed to be revegetated. But Tom explained off the record that they're being used for the, for the ag use. And I think, maybe I'll let Tom speak, because I think recently, or semi-recently, they've gotten ag designation from the county. And I think that's a new thing, I don't think that affects the site plan approval and what's covenanted. But I think that's an important part of it to discuss, not just the buffers.
We worked very hard on this project, in terms of the buffers and, and the plantings. And so it's disappointing to hear that it's been overcleared. Were there project limiting fences in front of this buffer that, at all?
There were, when we first went out there, we didn't see anything.
Did we not require it in the first, in our site plan approval?
I didn't see it spelled out, they, the ag fences were, were called out in the staff report, saying, you know, they don't to be changed to be to the planning staff's approval. But, so maybe that, I, I wasn't part of that discussion, that was a few years ago, I don't, so maybe that was the, the intent was to have an ag fence there as a, a limiting, a limiting fence, because it is along the edge of the buffers.
We really didn't establish that.
We did not have that rule, but we often did, if you, if there's a part that's going to be preserved, we asked to put a split rail fence up. But I'm sure we did not on this, because that would have been such a huge, long fence, that's, and I think.
Over seven hundred feet on, on the one side.
And I think when I heard you say, we have two choices, we could approve a revege plan, or we could amend the covenant and let them keep what they've destroyed.
Yeah, I bring that, I, yes, those are the two choices, I bring it up because the current planting plan that was proposed to revegetate is only addressing the buffers. So we still have this covenanted nine point six, it was all part of the conditioned neg deck, neg deck and the approval of the site plan. So it either has to be amended, or it has to be fulfilled.
So the addition to the buffers that, that planned and worked on, does not affect the numbers of acres that were required to be. Ten point one is not reduced?
No, I, I think the way I'm understanding it is it's inclusive in that ten point one.
Okay.
Can I, can I interject?
Is the overclearing, yeah, and just, just one second, please. The, the buffers are included in the overclearing, I'm, I'm not clear about.
Yeah, they're, it's all, it's all part of the overclearing. I've asked for clarification on that, so we'll get that when we get an updated as-built survey, but the overall, it's, it's inclusive of the entire property, inclusive of the buffers. The, the point four nine nine five acres that are, that have been disturbed.
So they would meet the covenant requirement if they do this revegetation plan?
Yes, that's my understanding.
No, I think it's a little under, if.
Still a half acre under.
I think that it'll be important to have an explicit note here, the area of that hundred foot buffer that was disturbed. Because if I'm looking at the, that survey that was submitted that's there, it calls out these two other areas that were originally part of the revege plan. One is twelve thousand square feet, one is eighteen thousand square feet. And then the small area in the twenty-five foot buffer is about, I think it's a little less than three thousand square feet, or right around three thousand square feet. So that's already at a half an acre. So it's, it's unclear to me if the hundred foot buffer is really included in that or not, and that's what the ASBIL, so if the ASBIL comes back saying that those areas didn't match, then they would have to plant more, but we can just address it now, too.
Right, well, I mean, my sense is that we worked really hard on this application, so to revise a covenant, I certainly would not be in favor of that.
Back to the nine six, and then it becomes a question of where, do we want to see that planted?
Where we had specified.
If we want to just grow the buffers, or, or.
Okay, so let's hear from the applicant. Please, can you give us your name for the record?
Yeah, my name is Tom Paulsonelli.
Yes.
Okay, so, as you were discussing, the, the buffers will be restored on the overclearing, based on the planting plan. And we can accept what the town has proposed in terms of amending our planting plan, to include some of the different varieties of trees on the hundred foot buffer area. In terms of the other area that may have been overcleared, we had to install a well, which we did, I guess a month or two ago, or a while ago. And, and that well takes up some space, so we had to clear some area to get a rig in there to, to develop the well. We're also going to need some additional space to support the nine point six acres that we're planting. So the buffers will be, as we discussed in length, as you, as you said, the buffers that were slightly overcleared during the clearing process will be restored in full. And the interior spaces that we potentially overcleared, we're really using to support the agriculture of nine point six acres. You've got to store a tractor, you've got to store equipment, you've got to have a fertilizer put down. So you, you know, we have a seventeen point acre site, and we, we are only going to plant what the planting plan indicated, which is the nine point six acres, which is now very clearly identified on the property. But you have to have other, other space, and that space where there was some overclearing done, to support the agricultural work. We're not looking to plant anymore, this is all interior to the site, will have no impact to the neighbors, because we'll have a hundred foot buffer to the north of the Shopman Yacht, Shopman Farm. And we have a hundred foot buffer to the east between the Hickory Bend homes, as we discussed over a year or two of that. So that's the reason why we just can't plant nine point six and then just have woods around the nine point six, because there's no support space. In, in addition to putting a well in the ground, which is in that triangle piece at the lower end of the site that you're looking at, which I'm not seeing, but there is a, a triangle, which now there's a, a well that's down a hundred feet with, with a three horsepower motor and electrical switchgear to support the agricultural work. And we had, we also had to excavate for the electrical to come into that site, which we did, we brought the electric in. So all that takes a little clearing, we're going to, it's very difficult to work in a wooded, wooded area.
So we never, how come we didn't review this when we reviewed this site plan?
Okay, so, Tom, do you mind if I speak about where the nine point six is? And, and the covenant? So, as we were reviewing this, it was important, I guess, to, we review this and we did it under SECRAT, unlisted action. If they stayed under the nine, of the ten acres, they weren't unlisted action. If they went above ten acres, they would have been type one. So there would have been some additional review under SECRAT. So, the two, to consider his application, which would be to amends, you'd have to amend the covenant, he would also try, take another look at SECRAT, which, you know, whether something's a type one or unlisted, you do essentially the same review, the caveat is if there's any other entity involved in it, you would do a coordinated review, right? You'd have any other approving agency involved in it. So, you could consider the ten point one as a covenant amendment, but I would suggest at the same time taking just another look at SECRAT to make sure you didn't miss anything, what that, might that mean for the application. So that's where, why you put the covenant on it, is because they insisted it was going to be nine point six, that's what they're going to stay with. Because of SECRAT, unlisted action, you could do SECRAT at the same time, and there was a full environmental review, and those covenants came out of that review. I'm actually now confused. The, the nine point six acres, I thought was the farm. And the other was a buffer. The farm, I'm, I was assuming would include whatever the farm needed, so the sunflowers. Clearing for the well, the transport of the tractors. So, if that's not true, then I, I'm, I'm confused.
Then do we open up the whole application again?
I think you do, if you consider the ten point one, you'd have to take a look at everything, I think you do, because you did a SECRAT based on nine point. So the ten point one, again, I thought that the overclearing was only in the buffer. And so the nine point six is the, is the farm, including the clearing that they need to actually, to use, to farm it. So, what am I missing?
I don't think they accounted for what they would need for the support equipment when they came in.
It seems easiest if, if we have to expand another half acre to meet, right, the first review. So can't we just expand the buffers a little bit to make up the half acre? We're talking about twenty thousand feet is a half an acre, twenty thousand square feet, roughly? So is there some way that the people who went to look at this, to make the recommendation of the plan, could figure out a way to maybe, maybe increase the buffers, which is a good thing anyway, right? That would add up to the ten point one?
I'm still confused, because I thought the difference between the nine point six and the ten point one was the buffer that was overcleared.
But not enough, apparently, that's what it was.
So you're saying, Mr. Paulsonelli, that you couldn't use nine acres of planted area and point six, or nine point one, and then have your point five acres carved out for your accessory, you know, equipment, et cetera, and storage? Because really, it's a lot to then open this back up for a whole SECRAT process, you lose your whole season.
We don't, we have no, we definitely do not want that to happen. What we, we always went in with, with a nine point six acre of the farmland of planting, we went into that. And as we got into clearing the nine point six acres, and our whole plan, our business plan is to plant on nine point six acres. We, we slightly overcleared the buffers, which we're going to restore, so that's like, that wipes itself out. And then we had to, Bill put a well in, and we didn't want to put the well in the middle of the field. So we put the well in the other wooded areas we have around the homes, and around the, around the, the apple watchers that we have there. But if you add it all up, we're still at ten acres, though, even at nine point six of the farm, and we overcleared by four hundred, by less than half an acre, we're still under the ten acres, so still are we at that point under SECRAT? Even if you include the overclearing, isn't a whole, if you could call it all a farm, we're still under ten, ten acres?
Right, but farmland, farmland includes all the accessory structures or uses, right, that you would need. So that farmland isn't your full planted area, it's your farm, as the self-contained space.
But it's still under ten acres, it's still, even with the.
What was specified is nine point six acres for the fields and the other areas.
Well, we never, we never addressed the other areas on the site plan, we addressed the road going into the farm, but we never addressed, maybe it was, you know, my mistake being, you know, not a, an experienced farmer, but we needed to have support space, and we never addressed that in the site plan, because you can see it's, it's, it's just a farm around the wooded area. So by taking the extra four hundred thousand. So by taking the extra four hundred thousand, uh.
Clearing support space still brings them up to ten acres, but not over.
We don't, we, we think so, we won't know until obviously the ASBILs come, comes back, including the buffers.
But we need that to finish this discussion.
I think you do. I mean, maybe we get a kind of a consensus of the board, if he stays under the ten acres, would you be amenable? Because that is the trigger that came to be. So if he was at nine point nine or something like that, would you be amenable to that? And maybe we could work on a plan that makes that work, um.
I mean, I, I don't know how complicated it is, he needs to revegetate what he took out. Yeah, I mean. And then he has to put his equipment somewhere on the land, he's got nine point some odd acres. I mean, I don't know why he has to take that out of what we've already approved. I mean, if he's saying that he has to plant nine point six acres, which I think I heard, and he needs other space to, for everything else, then it's well over ten acres. And you have to open SECR. If he's able to farm in his nine point six acres as.
And keep his equipment there.
Keep his equipment there, as you were saying.
And I see, I'm sympathetic to this, um, you know, however, it's also an issue of fairness to the way that we consider other applications and the definitions. And a lot of things do come up within the town where farmland on nine point six, six acres and what's an accessory structure, what's allowable, it's important for us to be fair, I think.
And maybe, that's why maybe expanding the buffer a little bit, uh, on both is the easiest way, he still has all his farmland and resolves the problem.
Revegetate, like, over, you know, with shrubs over the well area, you, I don't know where there's.
If, if we, if we were to revegetate the buffers that are in this, the plan that was submitted, uh, this season, and then we surveyed the site, and we kept the area, the farm area under the nine point six acres, we'll know for sure at that point. And maybe we can revegetate some of the smaller areas outside the nine point six acres, so that would be, you know, under the, uh, within the site plan.
Right, to piece back together your, um, missing, you know, point three four.
You know, the buffers that we put into the farm were substantial, which we agreed upon, which were a hundred foot wide buffers to the east and, and twenty-five to the south. So we, you know, they are substantial buffers. And, and, um, as I sat through some of the agricultural meetings, they said the, you know, the buffers were, I think we lost three or four acres on the buffers alone, uh, four acres of, of, of the farm. So we've, you know, we've done what we could here to build a buffer around the site to accommodate, uh, the areas around it. And then we're kind of stuck in a, a little small site to be able to support the farm, and we overcleared slightly to do that. But again, you know, we'll be under the, the ten acres with SECR. If the final survey comes in, we'll make sure it's under that ten acres. We'll have our preliminary survey, then we'll do a final survey, and we'll revegetate it so we, we don't beat that, uh, threshold of ten acres. We are on eighteen acres of property.
So we restore the buffers now, get that done.
And then do a survey now.
So how do we ensure that this point five acres gets resolved, that, right?
The survey is going to tell us how much.
My understanding is that point five acres is they revegetate the buffer.
No.
No.
Separate. Buffer is one issue, this point five acres is a separate issue.
They're still short outside the buffer, as it exists now.
So how do we, uh, support, you know, the advancement of this business for the season?
How can you adjust your planting layout?
Well, I think you'd prove the buffers.
Yeah.
Right, you proved the planting, the buffers, I think we're, we're good with that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, allow them to do, uh, the fencing, is that, that's another thing, like, they would do the M and fencing?
Yeah, yes, that, that approval.
And then maybe give them a time, give them a timeframe to do, to submit a, uh, the, uh, this ASBIL survey.
Which will protect the buffers. ASBIL.
So maybe six, six months?
Yeah.
Does that sound like a question?
I, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm okay with that, if we can restore the buffers, get approval to put the fencing in, because without the deer fencing, the farmer is very limited what he can plant. Because sunflowers will be eaten the minute he puts them in the ground. So we want to get the deer fencing in so we can get a crop in for this year.
Is that still the crop, Tom?
That's still the crop.
Is that still the crop?
Yeah, that's still the intention, but if I couldn't get the deer fencing, yeah, if, if he couldn't get the deer fencing, then he's talking about dahlias and peonies because deers don't eat them, I guess, but we don't want to go down that road, but we want to get back to sunflowers, so we need a deer fence.
Solution is, is good.
Okay, so we'll try that, and then we'll be in time frame.
So how do you, like, ensure that what happens after six months?
Well, we have, we have a co calendar of all the things, our deadlines, so, um.
Uh, the conditions, that'll include, um, uh, a resubmission of the, the revegetation plan as part of that condition. And then the, the, um, ASBILs are always part of the conclusion of a, of a site disturbance. And then we'll include that six month, um, timeframe to, uh, submit, to resolve the remainder of the half acre.
And then we're, I think we're aiming for under the, uh, under the ten acre, right?
Under ten acres, right, that's what we did SECR on, and that's what we should stick to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so what's our action here? To approve the re-vetch plan or what?
To approve the re-vetch plan with those conditions.
Okay.
Yeah.
For survey.
Do you have that written out for us?
Yeah, I have it in front of you, some of them were sort of TBD, and I'll massage it to include the six month language. And, um, did I hand that out?
Yes.
Yep.
You see that, Jackie? It says one forty-nine Jagger at the top, I think it's a month.
It's gotta be here somewhere.
I've got it right, have it everywhere.
Yeah, here.
Here, Jackie.
Thank you.
So to be a resolved, revisions to the revegetation, the planting plan per the Ocean Fog Farm.
Yes, without, without recommendations included, so I've addressed that.
Your re-vetch plan.
And then, uh, the conditions were, is where I will take, uh, I'll still ask for the revision of the reg- re-vetch plan to include, and I will describe the planting, um, per staff recommendations for both buffers. And then, um, the, the inspection, the ASBIL surveys, and then I'll include language for the, the six month timeframe to make sure we are under ten acres.
Because you have six months in number four.
Yeah, well, that's, they can extend it, because the approval lasts for, uh, it's, it's a twelve month approval, and they have the ability to extend it.
So here's a question too, if the covenant says nine point six acres, we still would have to do a covenant amendment?
Yes, if they ended up under.
If they ended up not nine point six, okay. So try to get that, try to find little pockets where you could fill in that, you know, near point five acres so that you don't have to have the covenant amendment and all that stuff.
We'll do, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll try to make that happen, especially if we have to do any additional market with this, I understand.
These are revised, email us a revised.
Yeah, I'll email you the file.
And the survey will be due within six months.
Any other comments? We're going to move this application, motion by Tom, second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Close extensions, uh, five in favor, two absent.
Go on, Brown.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Tomorrow, I'll email you the file.
Email us all, thank you. Okay, print a David Goodman.
David Goodman is, uh, rescheduling the hearing, they had a, um.
Posting problem, I guess, I don't think it's a posting problem, I think they, they just didn't bring the stuff.
One of the mailings, I think, is, uh, lacking, so we have to reschedule the hearing to June, June twelfth.
To June twelfth, motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by Chris, all in favor?
Aye.
Extensions, five in favor, two absent. Do you, are you, do you have applicants here?
Uh, I have one more item, and the applicant is here.
Okay.
Uh, I think I'm on the next.
Zainab Duas Maynard?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is the map. This is off for completeness of the one previously deemed this application, I think it was in March.
Completeness and schedule of hearing?
Yes, scheduling the hearing, um, the next available date is June twenty-sixth. At the last, uh, there was an extensive history on this property, the board had a lot of questions.
Is that the one that, um, Carl Benicasa sent the narrative on?
Yes, the, that, that sort of report, um, prior to that, they sent a title search. Is here, in case you have any further questions, um, but this is the, the site. The proposal is to, for a two lot subdivision dividing, um, the area of the parcel that fronts Halsey Lane, which, uh, includes the single-family residence.
The three driveways or two driveways, is that this one?
Well, it has a single here, but then it has another driveway off of this private right of Way Morgan, Morgan Hill Way, it's called. And this, uh, portion of the, the, the second lot has this pre-existing, um, apartment over a garage. They've both been renovated, expanded upon, uh, but you'll have one undersized lot and one oversized lot.
Are there COs on all these properties?
There are COs, variances, uh, every, everything's been, been, been done.
Trying to remember his, his narrative, yeah. So it's complete?
It is complete, Mike, I'm going to keep going.
Yeah.
Do you want, yeah?
The board, the board asked for.
Can't give a shit.
Absolutely, Michael Summons, GAO Council, uh, Carl Benicasa, eight sixty, lots off Highway in Watermelon. Good afternoon, everyone.
Hi, Mike.
Um, the board previously, uh, looked at this and had questions as to the history of the property. We provided an extensive narrative to the board, um, complete with, uh, a, a number of, uh, exhibits um, that really give you the full history of the narrative of how this property got to here, uh, and what they're trying to do. Um, so basically, what, what, what we're trying to do is basically split it into two lots to have, uh, so it, in one sense, we're making it non-conforming by having the smaller lot that borders onto, uh, out onto the main road. However, we're making a conforming lot, uh, that borders out to the private Morgan, Morgan Hill Way. It's non-conforming because there's two, you know, dwelling units on the same, uh, property that exist by, uh, by way of variance. Um, so that's the, that's why we're here in front of the board, um, to determine that. And then we will go off to, uh, zoning to do the, uh, variances, uh, to conform it.
So it's.
It will apply the covenant amendment for, uh, because the subdivision, and then do one, help them know further subdivision. But they can amend the, uh, the restrictions with a majority plus one vote.
But we're just deeming a complaint now?
Just deeming a complaint now, that's all.
And scheduling a public hearing?
Yeah, that's all.
And, and setting a public hearing.
Uh, Jackie never answered me, is June twenty-sixth okay? That's our first statement.
Kristin, how, how, June is good, June twenty-sixth. Okay, motion by Tom, second by Gloria, all in favor?
Aye.
Close extensions, five in favor, two absent, okay, you're all set.
Great, thanks, everyone, have a good afternoon.
Okay, uh. Claire, you have the last two, right? This, do you want this, floating?
Yes.
Floating, Voto Marte.
Yes, I can't say it.
Same time.
So we saw this back in June, um, five, four. This was a request for a pre-submission, um, um, of such a property, which is a sand mine currently.
Is this the sand mine that's going to be grandfathered, is, is this one of them?
No.
Grandfather?
No.
Be part of, under the sand mine regulations that just were passed?
The new, yes.
Yeah, this would be part of that.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, all sand mines are, so.
Well, it's, sand mines in, in, I thought was only in residential areas.
This is residential, this is some residential, right? Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
And do we know where that, this particular sand mine stands in terms of its life expectancy?
No, that's a great question.
When they originally proposed it, they said that they had cleared ten acres, but they intended to continue functioning as a sand mine for another period of years.
I think there's people on this.
That was before the change of code.
Step right up.
But it's good, you have, you can answer some questions. Um, do you want to ask?
Yes, so, who, one of, one of you, two of you come up?
Three chairs.
Yeah, three chairs, I'll go over here.
And give us your name for the records, please.
Kevin Brown, Fogland Brown, Syracuse, New York, and I'm counsel to Next Gen Property Management.
And.
I'm Steve Booney, uh, Marine Energy Technology Solutions. First, I'm Scott, you've got Al, you have, you have Grocer Consulting.
Your last name?
Al Scott, AL, MS, KOG, Gable Grocer Consulting, six thirty, Johnson Avenue, Bohemian.
Okay.
And I'm Regina Bykow, with PW Grocer, B-Y-K-O-V.
Okay, as long as our secretary, can you cut that, Kristen?
Thank you.
So what happens is, um, at the time, in June, there was some discussions, there was a work session, the board had some questions. Um, at the time, the water feature was not as big as it is now. Um, the board said, well, we can't really consider an application if the, the conditions are not what you've been reviewing, right? Um, so the applicant went back, um, it is now bigger. Um, I believe they still have a permit active from the DEC, and they're applying to go further with the mining. That's what I understand, but they can clarify. Um, so it is a larger structure, larger pond, you can see that. Do you mind telling that, since it's twenty twenty-two? Just for reference. Right, it's twenty twenty-two, and that's twenty twenty-four.
Considerably, it's like four times larger.
Yeah, exactly, so, um, it's getting closer to what they're considering, I'm not quite sure, how big is it now, do you know?
About five acres.
It's five acres now, so it's going to fourteen acres?
Yes, that, the mining, let me explain that there, there was a DEC mine permit, that's for a five acre pond. And then a application was in to fourteen acres, same area. And we made the application initially saying, we'll take the fourteen acre pond when it's complete, and we'll put on a seven point five megawatt floating solar under the provisions of the code. We came in last year and said, well, you don't, it's not there yet, and there's the permitting issues with the DEC. So we just went with the mine we have now, the permit we have now, five acre plan, and we downsized from seven point five acres to a phase plan of fi- of five megawatts and two point five megawatt phases. So we have enough room now for the two point five. If, and we have gone, when we were talking last year, it was very conceptual, we've now secured an, uh, EPC, a contractor, to take, we've got the, uh, interconnect application in, uh, everything's, we've got full designs now. What we're asking is to review the two point five that's accommodated by the existing lake, the existing pond. Later, you know, phased, if, if the rest of it, if we can't get enough room in, in it, if you don't want to have five megawatts, we'll leave it at two point five, but I think five megawatts meets, uh, eight percent of your, your goals, and, and because it's floating solar, this can be done in the next year and a, eighteen months will be, you'll, you know, the EPC's in, Steve can address this, we can have two and a half megawatts in eighteen months.
And so you'll continue mining the other portion of the property?
Well, we'll.
While the, while the, um, solar is set up?
Well, we, we'd like to, and we'd like to go to the five megawatts, but if the board doesn't approve it, we've got the two point five.
No, my question is, are you going to continue sand mining?
Uh, we have a DEC permit, that's all in litigation, it's extensive litigation with the town.
Yeah.
We have, uh, wanted to court, at the district court, we were reversed on the appellate division. We think that decision is incorrect, uh, respectfully to the appellate division. We filed a notice of appeal. Uh, we anticipate, given the scope of that decision, which basically said Syracuse Aggregates does not apply on Long Island, that's not what the Court of Appeal said a few years ago. We may end up mining the fifteen acres under the DEC mine permit. In either event, if you approve, we can go ahead and mine and put in a five megawatt plan as a construction permit, just like any other construction.
So if they're, they're, they're designed independently to function on their own. So the five acre lake that's there, we can put the, the two and a half megawatts in and be dispatching power to the grid, you know, within twelve. So the five acre lake that's there, we can put the, the two and a half megawatts in and be dispatching power to the grid, you know, within twelve to fifteen months.
So my question.
And that doesn't have anything bearing on the, the other part?
I just have a basic question.
Yeah.
Is this an opportunity site in our code or not? With my understanding that it was not, but I don't know if that was changed.
Yeah, I don't think we would have gone to all this effort if it wasn't the opportunity zone. We spent hundreds of thousands of dollars doing this. It was because it was stated as the opportunity zone.
Um, I, I think it does say for solar, it's an opportunity site.
Yeah, it's not for battery storage.
We're not talking about batteries.
Oh, no, not battery storage, no battery storage, no.
So two point five is now doable on the existing five acre. You're hoping to get approval for fourteen acre, in which case you put another two point five. And while this is going on, you're in court trying to figure out whether you can continue to mine.
My, on, on the, the area to the south, going south, yeah. They may say no, they may say yes, we're, we're, I mean, that's a very different decision, and.
Right.
And that's counsel, it, that was, it shocked a lot of people.
But the only thing on the table here is the two point five on the existing five acre lake.
Correct.
So the, the pond is, the pond is grown to five acres now, did you say?
Correct.
So what do you do? You put a barrier or something to just do the one half of the five acres to? So you segregate it, and you just put it here down, or?
Yeah, it's, it's a- anchored to the, the size, okay, that's how it's done is, and that is out of the realm of where they're going to be mining if they get the, the additional uh approval.
Right.
So it, it is designed independently, the, the onshore structure, which is just a small concrete pad for the inverters, is uh located between the two sites, so that when the, i- if the south is approved, then that could be brought up. And the, the interconnection study that we've submitted is for the full five acre, or full five megawatts. So we could just do the two and a half, it's designed that way, so we can do the two and a half, and then if, if and when, we can add the additional two and a half.
And then theoretically, you, you keep mining, this pond keeps getting bigger, and then you want to expand?
Yeah, limitations on the, the mining.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're constrained by the existing disturbed area. There's, this is all long disturbed. This site's been mined for a long time, it's all long disturbed, and we're constrained. Could we have, could we get to seven point five? Going, we, we might have been able to, I mean, that's what we initially, but once we got an E P C and had a, a, the, the formal engineering done, they came back and said, no, you're gonna, you know, stay inside that box, that fourteen acres of water you're gonna want, want to have.
So how do you separate, how do you separate it? I mean, Tom asked that question, I'm not sure I'm clear.
Because it floats on top of the surface and your excavator can.
How do you separate the water?
You don't have to, there's no need.
So you'll have, can you have?
You can have a large lake and have floating on one side and still have operations on.
When you say floating, it's attached to something underneath.
It's anchored to the sidewall.
It's anchored, it's, it's not literally.
It is literally floating.
It doesn't move around like a sailboat.
That, thank you.
It's anchored, it floats in the water, but it's anchored.
Yeah, we have.
So it can move very little with, there's seasonal fluctuations in water level, so you need some play. But they don't, they don't just sway all over the lake, they're, they're probably move within a few feet, you know, they're anchored. Multiple anchor points along the sidewalls.
The arc here, we're looking at, that's the lake now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that fourteen? Or, and that fourteen acres now?
No, that's five.
That's just five. So how do you create this additional lake?
I just.
Keep digging.
Excavating.
And that's gonna just make the water come up?
No, the water's there.
Yeah.
I got.
We're moving the land.
It's like digging, digging at the beach, you know, and you dig a hole, you start to get to a spot where water.
This is groundwater, right, it's gonna come all the way, okay.
I think it's just, I mean, we're just gonna be setting the pre-submission conference, but, you know, we looked at this amortization of sand mines and basically said, well, this is crazy, we should stop mining right away because of all the environmental considerations. So here you have solar, which, you know, it's like, oh, that's great, but what's the cost benefit analysis here of, you know, uh, opening the door to this, you know, community energy pumping into the grid um against now, you know, then an expansion of the continuation of the sand mine, which is really detrimental to the water quality. Um, so, you know, that's, those are the things I'm thinking about, and I think that you'll hear that.
I mean, I'm not saying the lake is there, it's not whether, whether you allow solar, don't allow solar, the lake is there.
Right, but.
So now, is, is this a good use for reclamation, is for the site, which meets the town code?
Right, but I.
Something beneficial.
Correct, but the other side of what you're saying is that it's environmentally a negative impact.
Which, which is.
You're mining.
And essentially, with our approval of this use, it's kind of, you know, saying, oh, that we're, you know, supportive of this. And I feel conflicted about that, and I think we will hear that at the pre-submission conference. So I just wanted to go on record for that, and we can set the conference and discuss it.
Which is why I asked where you stood in terms of the new code, which is basically grandfathering sand mines, sand mines away based on the amount of sand that you've already taken out and what you might still be able to continue. And that, I believe you have to go to the C B A to get approval, and I don't, I don't have the code in my head to know what you're allowed to right now, but that, to me, that's a question I need answered before I can even think about this.
Well, and, you know, the whole um amortization of the sand mines was to, you know, honor that the pre-existing use was, you know, allowable and to give businesses a chance to get, realize their um investment, right? If you're making another investment here that is, has a monetary value, I would then argue that you should give up some of the, that amortization schedule um and stop mining sooner to reconcile the books.
I don't disagree with you, great.
That's my opinion.
Yeah, no, I, I am totally agreeing with that, too.
For your consideration.
I think the, the, the code that the town board passed was a seven year amortization.
At the max.
At the max.
Depending on how far along they are on.
We had made a recommendation for fewer years. Um, so, so you can see the issue here, you know, it's almost like double dipping, so, um.
Right, but if you can reduce, you know, that would be, for me personally, just speaking for myself, um, looking at that, you know, where you're ending up with the same amortization schedule, but you can still, you know, use that long term. I would reduce the number of years um that you'll continue mining and, you know, potentially consider a transition of use that would be more appropriate for the groundwater.
On, on the phase plan, we'll be done mining in, in two years, and it'll be changed over. If, if we can do the north side now, we, we can finish this whole thing and be, and be done in two years. Now that we have the E P C, and we know exactly what we have to do, how, where we're gonna put it, how we're gonna launch it, they're very easy. Floating solar is nothing like other operations.
Right, but we're also not interested in, you know, faster degradation of the environment, you know, there's that.
Did you not talk about lining at some point last time when we had a work session, talked about lining this pond?
No.
You never said that.
You really couldn't.
It's a wetland.
Yeah.
It's not just wetlands.
Intersecting with the water table, essentially.
Yes, it does, we have.
It has been for a long time.
It's a wetland.
As it exists, but it's growing.
You have to be finished mining in two years.
Wet ones are not.
We will be finished mining in two years.
Under the current code, the very recent adoption?
I believe.
No, we don't have to.
We don't have to, but we could be to, to do this. So, folks, there's, there's another thing, though, we're, we're saying that this is horrible for the groundwater. We have, we have a decade of studies of this site, this specific site, and there has been no impact to groundwater from the mining. In fact, when they went to mine in the water table to remove the one risk that was identified by D E C after thirty years of evaluating five hundred sand mines in New York State, the one risk, it, you know, it doesn't add contaminants except spills from operating equipment. So before, when they went in the water table, as soon as they opened up the water, they went out and invested in electric dredge and electric conveyors and eliminated that risk because they knew that was the issue in this town, that people are very concerned rightfully about this water table and about the salt source.
Let's set that issue aside because that's a different discussion, but you're telling me, so what we were asking for is maybe if you reduce the amount of time for mining, then we can be much more favorable towards this project. And what you're saying is you will be finished in two years, which is less than the requirement that the town now has in place for you to finish? Can we find that out?
We don't know that, that's the question.
We don't, we don't know, but we have to go through the amortization process and all that.
Okay, that's what I wanted, but you did, I think you just said, though, it was less than the years you required, so how can we find out how much time you'd be allowed? Because if you can come back and say, well, we'll cut that in half, and so we can get this project going, maybe.
I think it's a matter of like, what's the determining factor, too? Like, the time is what the town said, but, you know, it's like, oh, you only have, you know, you have fifty acres and we estimate that you could cut down, you know, five acres at a time, so you have ten years, you know, oh, we'll just, you know, we're gonna be done in two years, cutting down the hun- you know, the acres, you know, so.
They don't have any plan at all to go outside of the existing mine, but all this land that we're talking about, every, every acre of it is already in the mine, it's already been affected by mining. It's just a matter of whether we leave it as a mound in the middle of the, you know, walkway, or we leave it as a pond with floating solar on it. If you look at that, that, that whole area is already in the mine, when you look up at that picture, you see the white.
Can I ask a question? How would you define this? You keep saying pond.
Reservoir, lake.
Reservoir.
What's the depth of it?
Uh, forty feet.
Forty feet.
You have forty feet of water in there?
Forty feet of water, yeah, yeah, that's.
It's, it's, they've dug into the aquifer.
Into the aquifer.
And the aquifer is, is now exposed to the air, which is why it's a degradation because now all the stuff that is in the air is going into the water.
Actually, there is contamination coming onto the site, it's coming from the New York State D O T highway to the north, and it's getting into the catch basins, and it's running south under my client's property. Those are certain chemicals, they've been documented, they're much stronger in the upgrading side, when they get to the downgrading side, they're much less. One of the reasons is because there's a pond. Chemicals such as VOCs, when they're exposed to air, dissipate and volatilize. So I, even people at D E C, who I know people don't always agree with, have said, sometimes when you have VOCs in groundwater, which is not from the site, it's been documented, low levels, but they're better when they leave the site because it's actually cleaning up the groundwater. There's a lot of false facts about mining in groundwater, and it, it, it's, it's a shame, but there's, there's data. And, and I implore people to look at some of the data, because there's, there's misinformation about the facts that mine sites contaminated.
Okay, but you know.
You might have to hire a consultant.
Right, so, you know, I mean, like, we're, we're gonna, I think it's important to say that we're going to get into this, and like, you know, a hydrogeologist can, that we hire can explain how the water flows and, you know, how it's impacted, because there's a lot of different ways, right? So, you know, I would move to set the, the pre-submission conference, if it's.
Really critically important.
So we can get into that.
It is.
And you know, whether we entertain the application or not, uh, and this is, i- in the sense that it's an inappropriate site. I mean, if it becomes a wetland, that is not an appropriate site, that's not an opportunity site. And so, this is neither fish nor fowl here, and that it catches us in an awkward spot where you've got active litigation going on about stopping sand mines and certainly phasing them out, and now wanting to put what is essentially a environmentally nice situation on top of it. It, it's, it's, it's a contradiction in some ways, and I appreciate what you're trying to do, but it may not, in fact, be the appropriate site for what we're looking for.
You've got, uh, if you have sand and the, all that water from those catch basins are traveling through sand slowly, you know, with the different chemicals that you're talking about versus through water as an express lane, you know, south.
The volatility of the, those contaminants you're talking about allows them to evaporate away. That's the point, is, if it's, if it's going through the ground infrastructure, it's not going away, and we can prove it.
Yeah, so we have to look at all of that.
We, we have ten years of data on the entrance from the aquifer to the exit of our property, and it shows that, that there's, that stuff's passing through from another source, okay? And by, what he was getting at is, is that the, the volatility, it evaporates away, so there's actually less leaving that was coming in. So that's a positive, and.
So that's good, we should look at that.
Yeah, no, that's perfect, I mean, and you can see by the, the first three pages that this is a typical uh technology that's used on water sources. I mean, those, those four projects were done, those are not exclu- or uh ex- the full extensive list of water.
Can you tell us where they were?
They're all, it's all right there.
No, no, just can you tell?
Yeah, two of them are in New Jersey, uh, one's in Ohio and one's in Utah.
Okay, do they live, do they live over their aquifer?
They're sitting on their reservoirs.
Yes, they're on reservoirs. They're all on reservoirs.
Drinking water reservoirs.
Drinking water reservoirs.
Aquifers.
No, not aquifers, they were.
Not aquifers.
Their reservoirs.
Yeah, different animals.
Right, it's a different.
It's a different animal completely.
There's one here that's on the aquifer, which one is it?
You guys are getting tight on your time. I'm sorry, I don't wanna, I want you guys to be neat, hangry.
Because we have a big agenda tonight.
Continuing this as part of the conference.
The Sayerville, New Jersey is on the Old Bridge Sands and Farrington Aquifers.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree with that.
We, we have that from last time.
So, um. So we have to process it that, that fast?
Oh, that would be, not two meetings, but, you know, not the usual two, but three, that's three, three, six weeks' length.
And do we have everything that we want on this?
Yes, they submitted a very complete package about the information that they're doing, I think, pre-submission plans, you know, concept, there's a lot to this. Um, there'll be a lot to this, but.
I would, I would like to.
There was a lot of information collected as part of the town board's working on that amortization.
Amortization, yeah.
A lot of presentations, a lot of information collected. We might wanna take a look at that, I don't know if that's all up on the website or not, but.
I don't know anything about that besides.
I, I think we need to.
I watched some of them, and there were a great many, you know, for and against and all that, but there's.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen some of it, but.
We don't have to reinvent the wheel, I think we could all learn a little bit by reading some of what was presented there.
I also think we, I would love to know where this sand mine is in, in that amortization plan, because I think that's an important piece of information that we now need, which we didn't before that, that law was, that code was changed.
Sure, yeah.
Against the June twenty-sixth.
Motion.
Motion by, um, Tom, seconds, by Gloria, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close extensions, five in favor, two absent.
And then I just have an extension.
Do you have an extension on Scuttle Hole Business Park?
Yeah.
Extension to. To what, Claire? What's our extension date?
Uh, May twen- my sixteen, twenty twenty-seven.
Oh, why do I have?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty twenty-seven, two years.
I have six twenty-six, twenty-five written down.
Six twenty-six, twenty-five.
I don't know why.
Oh, that was, uh, that was the original thing, resolution in there, but I amended that.
So extension to May fifteen, twenty twenty-seven, motion by.
Scuttle Hole?
Yes.
Yeah.
Why so far out?
Motion by Tom, second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Close extension, five in favor, two absent.
This is the, uh, no, it's not.
Why so far out?
Yeah, that's it.
And we are adjourned? No?
No, you've made me go do this edit.
Oh, sorry, sorry, yes, thank you, Claire, thank you.
Oh, I suppose I didn't keep one for my. So what I changed in this, um, was I added the two conditions at the bottom. For the planning board hereby approves the amendment for the Affordable Covenant for Citron nineteen, subject to the approval of the final covenant by the housing director, and subject to the amendment covenants being incorporated into the amended offering plan for the condo amendment.
Excellent.
Okay.
Okay, so we're heading this.
It'll be Citron nineteen, this, this is just straight from um Minutetrack, so it doesn't have the heading on.
That's why Anthony didn't have it either, yeah.
So in this is, yeah, go ahead.
No, so we want a motion to approve, right?
What is it?
Nineteen for the amendment to the covenant.
What's the name of the applicant?
This was Citron nineteen.
Thank you. Citron nineteen.
I missed the Citron, I just heard nineteen.
Right, the condos, they'll be able to rent them, right?
Yes.
The tiny units of the regular.
And one affordable is not rentable.
Okay.
Motion, okay, motion? Second, Kate, second by Gloria, all in favor?
Aye.
Close extensions, five in favor, two absent.
Motion to adjourn.
You can, it's just, uh, your ninety-four holding. What Anthony had provided.
Oh, thank you.
And I wrote ninety-four, Dune Road, holding on top of it.
So Minutetrack is not. So Minutetrack does not put the title of the document?
You'd have to save it, then print it, it takes five minutes, and, you know, nobody has five minutes.
Okay, uh, motion to adjourn, and turn off your mics, please.
Did we adopt this one?
You don't have to adopt it, you adopted it, this, you wanted just a fresh copy.
Oh, thank you.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn by Kate, second by Gloria, and all in favor?
Aye.
Close extension, six in favor, two absent.